Good evening. Welcome to the North Idaho College March 28th Board of Trustees Meeting. I would ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Banducci, would you please read the mission statement?
Let me get my glasses on. The North Idaho College Mission Statement is as follows. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. We have a quorum tonight. We don't have any special guests, except all of you there in the audience, and no one has signed up for public comment. Must be because it's spring break. And so, with that, I'd ask if the board has had an opportunity to review the minutes, and if so, do you have any suggestions, changes? Hearing none, we'll just accept the minutes as written. Our first agenda item is celebrating success. Tree Campus USA. Bill McElver, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair Wood, members of the board, Dr. McLennan, Mark Lyons. Yes. I'm glad I get to go first, because I think I've got some exciting news and some fun stuff to talk about here tonight. I'll work through a PowerPoint really quickly. It's Tree Campus USA. We're pretty excited about it, and my goal here tonight is to tell you a little bit about what it is, who was involved, why we did it, and then at the end, maybe a little bit about when and where we hope to celebrate. So, that said, let's see if my flicker works. What is Tree Campus USA? It's a function of the Arbor Day Foundation. Back in 1976, Arbor Day Foundation started the Tree City USA Initiative, and since then, 3,400 communities around the country have joined in in that effort to include Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. In fact, I believe we're going to celebrate our 35th consecutive year as a Tree Campus, or Tree City USA. 10 years ago, Tree Campus USA, Arbor Day initiated Tree Campus USA, and since then, 350 schools have joined in, up to 3,500 colleges and universities around the country. And I see this spring, I'm excited to say, became, I'm gonna say, number 351, and only the second in the state of Idaho. The other is down at Northwest Nazarene University in Nampa. So, that's a little bit about Arbor Day and who they are. So, with that said, I've got a short, just over two-minute video that probably does as good a job of explaining what this is as I will tonight, because a picture says a thousand words. I don't know if we've done the math on videos, but apparently, if I can figure out how to push play here. There we go. Sounds? Maybe it's on the...
It should have sound.
Not hearing sound. I'm doing like this. It should have sound.
Technical stuff, huh?
There's nothing here.
That's all right.
My wife can sign, and sometimes she's just, her hands are flying, especially like they're singing. It's pretty, though. I need to watch him sign.
I'm excited to be a part of this program, because I want to leave a legacy. I want to look back and know that I made a change on my campus and in my community.
So, I realize, while I was watching that, I may have failed to introduce myself. I guess I just figured everybody knew who I was. I'm Bill McElver, manager of the physical plan and facility, so getting that out of the way. So, you might have noticed up there that there was a list of five qualifications, which gets me onto what it takes to qualify, and how do you qualify. Essentially, it was meeting the five standards. The good news was, we had, when we found out about Tree Campus USA, we realized that we were already doing some of it. So, essentially, to repeat, it was a campus tree advisory committee, which we established this year, in '17 actually, a campus tree care plan, which we documented and created. We did already have expenditures, of course, so we just captured those expenditures. We had to have an Arbor Day observance, which we did back in November, and then a service learning project, which was to include students, and we had, the city of Coeur d'Alene came down and helped us for their Arbor Day. They advertised here on campus. We gave out some seedlings to students and put tags up all over campus indicating the benefits of trees. So, that was this year's service learning and what we had to do to apply for it. To get to the application, it was an online form from Arbor Day Foundation, and they had reached out to us to let us know how to apply. And so, I took all of the information that I had collected from faculty, staff, students, landscape, and applied that to the certification in December. And in November, or February of this year, on a Friday afternoon, we, I was getting ready to go home, and I received an email from Arbor Day Foundation congratulating NIC in acceptance that we were now a Tree Campus USA. So, yay! We were very excited. Passed that along to Chris Martin. He shared with some others, and for me, at least, it made a nice weekend. So, that's how we qualified. So, I guess getting on to who helped, we had a number of people who played in that. I'll start down there on the right. You can't really see that, but it's Grace Tree Service. A few years back, Grace Tree Service, we had called onto campus. We'd had a wind event here on campus, and they came down and helped us identify some of the hazards that were created by it and the condition of some of our trees, which really raised some flags. Hey, maybe we need a more substantial plan. So, Grace Tree Service was instrumental in helping us get that started before we even knew there was a Tree Campus USA. So, Sean Bennett there on the left is the current owner, and he recommended that I get ahold of Katie up there on the top. Katie Siksenko is the urban, city-urban forester for Coeur d'Alene. Maybe some of you know Katie. And I can't say how grateful I am to Katie. It just went into hyperdrive when I called Katie. She said, "Bill, thank you for calling me. You've been on my list," and it really just took off from there. She's been a wonderful help. In fact, the folks over there on the left, mostly in the back row, are volunteers that Katie has helped with city trees all over town, and they were, at the time, out of trees in the city, so she recommended that we use the volunteers here on campus. So, they came down and worked with our landscape crew, who is mostly the front row there. Krista Bell Fisher there on the left with the blue jacket on. She organized and had all of our landscape folks work with the volunteers and learned quite a bit about pruning our young trees out on the corridor. So, they went through all of those in the course of six weeks. And when they were done, I'd like to thank Culinary Arts Department. They allowed us to come over and share lunch with the volunteers. We celebrated with the volunteers at Emory's, and it was a really nice afternoon. Everybody got to talk trees, which they love to do. And I'd like to point out, you can't maybe tell from here, but one of the fellows in the back row is Jim Culture, who used to be in our mill right. So, it's good to see Jim back on campus. And so, that's partly who was involved. This next slide is, gets to maybe some of the future service learning projects. David Stevenson from the Department of Lands allowed us, upon Katie's talking with him and request and introducing him to us here at NIC. That's a tree plotting program that, to my knowledge, NIC is the only one, at least in the state of Idaho, the only school that had access to that. It was intended for cities. And David saw what we were doing here, liked what we were trying to do along with Katie, and gave us access to that. So, over the course of the winter, our landscape department has plotted over 800 trees up on there. Each of those, different colors, and I don't know if you can see those, but each color represents a different type of tree. And over on the right, it runs a tally of how many of each type of tree you have. And to get to the service learning part of that, I've already had some instructors. Julie Van Middlesworth, who is on the advisory committee, has indicated that she may be able to use this in her environmental science and geology classes. David Foster, Mike Kelly, and Suzanne Romly, who is in math and computer sciences, had reached out to us asking if we had a tree inventory. At the time, we didn't, but she said, "If you get to that point, we could really use that in our statistics class." So, I think Suzanne may be using this in the future, and that's, I hope, just the start of getting more students involved with that. So, tree plotter is a really nice feature, and thankful to David Stevenson for getting us access to that. Why Tree Campus USA? Briefly up there, American Physical Plan Association, back when we were doing the institutional optimization, a couple of years back, maybe many of you remember that. Some of the information we found there really indicated that the quality of the learning environments, indoor and out, really had a pronounced effect on student success. So, in that, I don't know if you can see that, but there was a survey, and it said that 50% of 16,000 students surveyed had said that the appearance of a college really made a big difference in the choice of what college they attended. So, that's one reason why. There's a big list of benefits I will share, just generally speaking. That says it reduces energy consumptions, cools in the winter, blocks, or cools in the summer, blocks wind in the summer, retains water in the soils, drowns noise. Many wonderful benefits, I'm sure you're aware of, of trees. So, more good reasons, we were on the right track with Tree Campus USA. Lastly, before I click this page, I'd like to share this story, because a couple of years ago, in the Nick Now, the foundation put out a note in the Nick Now about a student who had received a foundation grant. And when I read that in my office, I was like, "We've won the Super Bowl." And I think you'll see why, when I click the channel. The first line of what she said really sums up what we do in facilities, why we're here, and why Tree Campus USA. So, I don't know if you can read that, but the first line of that along with "thanks to the foundation," the first line says, "I chose to attend North Idaho College because the campus is beautiful." Super Bowl. So, anyway, I guess that said, in the facilities department, I'd like to give kudos to all of our folks in facilities. They work hard every day to improve and maintain the learning and working environments. Seeing this quote from Emily makes it really easy for us to get up, dress up, show up every day, do what we do. And finally, again, I'm gonna repeat it. Emily chose to attend NIC partly because the campus is beautiful. We chose Tree Campus USA because it provides a framework for maintaining the health and duty of the trees and beautiful tree, or healthy trees are beautiful, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So, that said, that's why. Arbor Day, 27th, which is a Friday, we're gonna have a tree planting in coordination with the city of Coeur d'Alene, because they're getting their recertification. We'll be getting our first certification. So, we've combined efforts. They're gonna come down here and join us on the campus, over in the green grass area out by the Chief Morse Antelope statue area, you know, the big grass area out there by the parking lot. And we're gonna have a tree planting and ceremony, Arbor Day celebration, and hope you can all come. Should be a fun time. Again, Katie's already in hyperdrive getting that thing going, and we're sharing ideas with her. So, lastly, Chris offered, so I'm gonna take him up on it. We brought you some gems, I'm gonna call them, because they're Western White Pine seedlings. And we thought it'd be nice if everybody could take one of those home to remember Tree Campus USA.
They only grow to about five feet?
Yeah, nearly five, nearly.
(laughing) Thank you.
Maybe seven feet around, Rick.
Awesome.
So, anyway, I thought maybe if, any of you have a need for a tree, or you've got, maybe some of you have young, maybe some of you have some young family members that would enjoy going out and planting a tree, maybe learning a little bit about them, learning how to plant them, maybe more importantly, learning how to care about a tree. So, I thought that'd be something fun. I've got a box full of them back there for anybody else who'd like to take a seedling home and maybe learn a little bit about the Western arches. You may know, it's the state tree, hence why I called them gems. So, thank you for letting me come and share tonight. Really excited in facilities about Tree Campus USA.
Bill, we have some questions.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Joe?
Just a comment. There is a landscape architect professor from University of Washington who said that the landscaping on a campus did more for recruitment than any vice president of enrollment ever thought about doing. So, thank you for that, Bill. Having been a member of the Arbor Day Foundation for over a decade, I really appreciate what you're doing, and anything we can do to improve the beauty of this campus is welcome. So, thank you and your crew.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Board, any other comments, question? Trustee Howard?
Yeah. Bill, thank you very much for this presentation. You'll recall, a few years ago, we were chopping down trees around here, and there was a lot of heartburn about that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm really happy, and I'm sure the board's happy, and the members of the faculty and staff and the students are happy that we have this concentrated effort now to bring more trees back and that sort of thing. And I'm wondering, that was really a neat, two-minute presentation, but do we get one of those cool signs that says Tree Campus USA?
You know, I believe we could probably procure one.
All right.
Arbor Day did reach out. They have already sent some press communications to our communications and marketing, and I haven't actually seen the package, but they claim that they sent some...
Thank you, Ian.
Flag. Thank you.
We also mentioned that there will be some signage...
Yeah.
...noting that designation.
That's awesome. Do you, well, that's a great presentation, and you're all right about the beauty of the campus, which includes the beach. And so, I was curious, do you do anything down on the beach? Do you do plantings or...?
I wouldn't say much for plantings because of the sensitivities with the levees, you know. So, we do maintain. We clean up mow and work on making sure it's irrigated and such. But, no, we don't do plantings down there, because there's the, between the city and us, there's an understanding of what they will maintain and what we will maintain, and mostly, as far as anything in the slope, we don't.
So, down on the beach, there's some kind of scruffy stuff down there. Do we have to keep that?
No.
I mean, I just, I notice it every year, and I'm like, "Oh, it looks really scready." But I know we have priorities. Anyway, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Cheers.
All right, that takes us on to ASNC. Caleb Weeks.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Wood, Board of Trustees, President's Cabinet, President McLennan, and guests. It's been a while, and I can say I almost missed these meetings, so thank you, everyone. Just kidding, just kidding, I have missed these meetings. So, I guess a recap for two months. ASNC has been pretty busy. One thing that ASNC has been worrying about, of course, is funds. We used all of our funds for our clubs, which is good to see, because we gave them $20,000 for the school year. And many clubs went on trips and hosted events on campus and whatnot, and did community outreach as well as student outreach. So, that was good to see, clubs using the monies well and benefiting from what they do best. ASNC also assisted the library with the midterm studying night, which, do we have anybody from the library here? If not, that's right, thank you, Lisa. Yeah, that was a great event. Over, about 100 students came and got help for the midterms with tutors, and ASNC got to engage with students, so that was great to see and connect with all of those students as well. Senator Peter Soderberg, who is not here tonight, has also been working hard on the commencement committee. Most of the ASNC members, along with two other students from NIC, also traveled down to Boise for the Community College Day, and two of those students got the PTK New Century Scholar nomination from, why am I blanking on his name? Governor Butch Otter. That's it. Thank you. Senator Martha Barb also worked with the Silver Valley Outreach Center. We had a employee retire, and he also took his furniture with him, which is fair enough. So, we actually gave them some furniture from the sub, and we got to engage with those students and also those employees out there, who oftentimes we don't get to see. So, that was nice as well to connect with them and to make sure that ASNC also heard those students and their concerns out there, and we helped them as much as we could. Let's see. The President's Wall was also finished, thank goodness. We had a bit of a hard time with that, actually, with a few contractors, but it's nice to see. I heard the event went very well. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but I heard past presidents came, and they also shared their stories, like presidents from the '70s, which was pretty cool. I really regret not going to that, but points for classes are important. We also got all the calculators for the foundation grants request, which is great to see. Immediately, most of them were checked out by students from the College Study Skill Center, so that was great to see, and all those students utilizing that and also passing the classes as best as they can. There's a lot to cover. I'll just kind of brief over this. The Student Union Advisory Board, which I chair, also met, and we're actually working on a PDA policy, mostly for the lower levels of the Student Union building, but hopefully we can get that progress, and that's been good to see. We are basing our policy off of Gonzaga's policy, in which the individual set is totally okay, so we're safe on that, and I'm looking forward to working with that. Martha Barb, Senator Martha Barb is also working on archiving all of the minutes and agendas from ASNC, along with the library, and kind of recording information, so I can finally get rid of that giant drawer full of papers in my office. That'd be great, more room for food, which would be awesome. The ASNC Elections Committee has also formed, and now we're working on hiring our replacements, pretty much. And it's been a fun process. We finished all the budget. Not looking so great, but we worked with what we got, and hopefully it will look better in the future. That's about all I got. We met with Alex Harris to discuss a $4 increase for parking. So, well, we approved that. We also had a resolution about it, and hopefully all of the students agree with us. That's about it.
All right. Board, any questions, Caleb?
(inaudible).
Yes?
So, what does parking cost now? And with the additional $4, what will it be?
It is $31 now. With $4, it will be $35.
And that's an annual fee?
Um, yes.
Per semester?
Per year. If there's a new student coming in for the semester, it will be for that semester too, but...
Calendar year?
It's the whole.
So, it'd be...
Can we not charge for some?
Okay, that's, because I was thinking, summer, we don't do anything with the parking there. We even put the little things over the meters, the covers, but, so fall, spring would be what we'd consider a year. Okay, so, school year, not calendar year. Okay.
Caleb, I didn't get to attend the President's Wall unveiling either. I had to go out of town. I asked my good friend, who was the ASNC advisor here for 37 years, Tony Stewart, to go in my place, and he really enjoyed it. He just had so much fun. He got to connect with old friends and students that he advised all those years ago, and he said it was really a great celebration. So, I'm sorry, I missed it too. You and I are in the same boat.
That's good to hear. I'm sure I'll hear more about it from Tony later.
Yeah, you will.
Yeah.
(laughing) Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that takes us to Staff Assembly. Kathy Sparks.
Happy serving to you all. So, since the last board meeting, we've had two staff assembly meetings, February 8th and March 8th. In February, we had two presentations. Sue Shibley and Kathleen Zurda Page presented to us about our cybersecurity grant and the program that they're working on, so that's very exciting for NIC. The other presentation was Deb Ferguson, and she presented on mental health first aid training. She explained the training that staff is able to go through to be aware if there's someone around that might have a mental health problem and how to manage that. So, she explained the program to us and invited us to the training. In March, Bethan Fuller gave us a presentation on the Head Start Program, which is, as you know, from your last board meeting, awesome. It's great what they do for our community and for the children. I also wanted to let you know, since January, the staff assembly has changed rooms, so we now are using Zoom technology, so other people who aren't able to come to one of the meetings, you know, in person, they can watch it on Zoom. And so far, we've had a pretty good response. Between 12 and 18 people are logging in and watching the staff assembly via Zoom. And the final thing is, the Staff Excellence Awards nomination is open. And last year, we kind of redesigned how candidates were selected for the awards, and we're gonna do that again this year, because it works so well. So, each member of PC appoints a committee member, and then ASNC also appoints a committee member, and then those, that committee will review all the nominations and make the determination using a rubric.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Board, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And tonight, Erin Davis is filling in for Jeff Carr, Faculty Assembly. That's nice of you, Erin. He's, he is obviously off having fun, and here you are.
Well, actually, Jeff is, he extends his apologies for not being here. He's actually speaking to the East Bonner County Library District tonight on the important topic of media literacy, so he's sharing his expertise with them.
Okay, that's important.
And I'm the only member of Faculty Assembly Executive Committee who did not make plans to be somewhere much, much more. I go home and make my reservations for next year. Faculty Assembly met on Thursday, March 8th. At our meeting, we heard a presentation from Erin Cloyde and Peg Blake on NIC's new mandatory advising model, and we talked about faculty interest in serving on a committee related to that. We also heard a presentation on North Idaho College's upcoming Diversity Symposium in April, and talked about strategies for faculty maximizing student attendance at that event. So, if any of you are available to come to any or part of that event, it's going to be a really wonderful program. We also opened nominations for Faculty Assembly officers for next school year, and we'll be voting and electing those officers in April. That concludes the report. Any questions?
Questions, Board, for Erin?
Erin, I have a question. Is there a status on the salary policy review? We sent that back for review by everybody, and I'm wondering what the status of that is.
Sure, I can take off my Faculty Assembly hat and put on, put on that policy hat. So, when you sent it back to President McLennan, it was decided that the Senate would appoint an ad hoc committee, because the Senate was the one who passed the policy that we sent to you. So, that ad hoc committee has been working, and we came up with some proposed changes that we believe, and Lisa, you could probably confirm this, I think the plan is to send it to Senate in April. So, it will be going, the proposed changes would be going back to Senate in April.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. And Erin, I should add to that. Trustee Howard, Brad and I are on that committee, and we did get an opportunity to review those changes, and it rests with President McLennan to where it goes from here, which we just got a good answer. Yes, please do.
Yeah, so, thank you. So, it did come back to me, and then to the committee, Senate Committee, back to me, to the subcommittee, and now it's going back to the full Senate for consideration.
Right. President McLennan gave us the go-ahead to go ahead and send it back to the full Senate.
Yes, so, we're, it's in process. Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to Lisa Kellerman with the Senate.
All right. Chair Wood, Trustees, President McLennan, guests. Senate has had two meetings since the last Board of Trustees meeting, so I'll first talk about our February meeting. February meeting, we passed second readings on many IT policies, which you see before you, in old and new business. So congratulations. That is all of our work to you. We also passed a second reading of some minor Senate bylaw changes that show a more clear distinction with the path of Senate policy and procedure, and how that moves forward, and where it goes if there's disagreement between the President and the Senate. So Senate just clarified some of their bylaws to apply to N I C policy and procedure. For the March meeting, we did not have any new business, so we anticipated a very short meeting, but we did receive a belated policy and procedure on campus parking. So Senate did discuss that. We did vote and then denied, denied the vote to amend the agenda to actually do a first reading of that policy and procedure. There was a lot of Senator concern on content and if the policy and procedure were needed, and there were some questions of whether it belongs in administrative guidelines instead of actual policy and procedure for the college. So instead of deciding to go through the documents and complete a first reading, Senate decided to create a Subcommittee that would work with the individuals who submitted that document to Senate. And hopefully, they will meet together and work, and then something will be resubmitted to us for the April meeting.
Great. Thank you. Board, any questions for Lisa? All right, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
That takes us on to the President's Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just want to add on a couple things to some of the reports you've already heard. You're going to be meeting our all, our representatives of the all Idaho academic team at an upcoming board meeting, but I did want to add that they were recognized. Two of the three members were able to make it for the recognition at the State Capitol, formal recognition by Governor Otter. They were presented a medallion. And what's really important about this is that this recognition had not happened before at the level that it did this year. And I really want to recognize Heather Erickson, our Director of Student Life and Leadership, for taking this up as an opportunity to highlight one of the best examples of academic achievement and leadership in the community college system through these all Idaho Scholars. These all Idaho Scholars then become eligible as members of the all American, all USA academic team, and they go into competition for scholarship money. So each of the community colleges typically has been able to nominate two members to the all Idaho academic team, who then get nominated to the all USA academic team. This year, they added a career in technology aspect to that, so now there's three students from each of the colleges. So nine total in the state of Idaho, of which there will be 12 when College of, Community College of Eastern Idaho picks up. They have not been in this world of the all Idaho nomination, but they will be. What's important about that is that one of our students, who was our all Idaho academic scholar, Erica Case, was selected as the New Century Scholar for Idaho, which means she's the top all Idaho scholar in the state of Idaho, and will receive recognition at the American Association of Community Colleges Annual Conference in Dallas. I'll be attending that with her here at the end of April. So she'll receive that recognition on the national stage, as well as a scholarship for $22,250. And a lot to be proud of there, our students, and just the coordinated effort to bring about this kind of experience for our Phi Theta campus students. I did attend the ASNC President's Wall Ceremony, and, you know, just everything Caleb said, I want to just add to that. What was really nice about that event is we had past presidents from the 1950s. We had the Addams Family, brother and brother. They followed each other as presidents in the early 60s. We had representatives, representative from the 70s, 80s. We had four N I C staff who were past ASNC presidents. And it was unscripted, but the past presidents were offered the opportunity to come and to stand up and speak. And the president from the 1970s got up and he spoke. And such, the story was really, I think, thematic of all of their experiences. What they all said was, you know, I didn't know what it meant to be student body president, and they all kind of gave that characteristic of feeling a little bit like an imposter, like, why would they want me to do this, and why would anybody vote for me? But on the flip side of that, to a person, the experience transformed their lives. And the one speaker that I'm thinking of talked about dropping out of college in Montana, University of Montana, feeling like a failure, going to work on the slopes for a couple of years, writing a letter to North Idaho College, explaining the situation, and asking if we would accept him. We did. And he described all those typical characteristics. I didn't think I was college material. I didn't feel like I could be academically successful. But faculty like Tony Stewart, who was sitting in the audience, said, you know, I got a C or a D on a paper, and he handed it back to me, said, you can do better than this. I know you can do better than this. And that confidence and the care of the faculty, it was so powerful. All of the speakers spoke to it, and I remember Chris and I were standing in the back of the room, and I said, you know, that's the college I want to work at.
Yeah.
And do we still have that heart at N I C? And I think we do, but we're getting bigger, and we have to keep mind of the impact that we've had on so many lives. And it was just a, it was a really nice way to hear that. I just wish we had videotaped it so I could present it all to you, but we're going to try to recapture those stories.
Well, Heather was, was ASNC President, wasn't she?
She was. Yes, she was. Yeah.
I didn't know who the others were, but we have three others there on campus?
Josh Gettle was one.
Oh, wow!
Who else was there the other night that works? There were four. Chloe? Yep. Shoot, I can't think of who the other one was, but there were four.
That's great.
And then just want to briefly touch on my high school basketball All-Star Recognition Breakfast we hosted last Saturday. Yeah, this is a phenomenal thing as far, this is probably one of the best outreach things, community engagement things we do at the college. We actually host, coordinate, make it happen, the All-Star Basketball, Girls' and Boys' Basketball Tournament for the entire state of Idaho. So we have people on our campus who have never been to Coeur d'Alene, and their families are here for the first time. It's a really nice event. Started 15 years ago, coincidentally, and by design, that's when Al Williams showed up here. And if Al was here, I'll do it anyway. I want to just recognize him and his entire staff. They make this happen, and the college is showcased in such a positive way, and we will draw enrollment from around the state because of that event. Just a lot of fun to be a part of that. I want to thank the Board for your participation in the planning workshop we had a few weeks back. I also want to follow up. There's a lot of work happening on that front. You'll be hearing more about that. We've already had some of the, I mentioned the community conversations that we'd be starting out of that, going out and hearing from folks in the community. We've already had a couple of those. We're getting some really nice feedback from that. There are two coming up. One is tomorrow at the Workforce Training Center in post-falls at 7:30 a.m., and then next Tuesday here on the main campus at 5:30 in the evening. Dinner will be served. And again, I want to send out an invitation to all of you to come and listen and be a part of those conversations. They're going very well, and good, good information. Lastly, I just want to just send, I guess, a message out to Coeur d'Alene School District 271, and let them know that all of us here at North Idaho College are thinking of them at a very difficult time, and, you know, that we're doing, want to be there to support all of those students, faculty, staff as much as we can. I just want to commend our Crisis Response Unit, led by Tim Gerlitz, for really stepping up and hands-on, all hands on deck, being involved, providing support. You may have read some media coverage on this, and Tim was the person who was cited in that. And that's because the folks in the district just could not get in front of a microphone because of the event itself, and Tim picked that up and was able to speak to that. They're going to be on hand again when school resumes next week, but that engagement from our folks with 271 has just been really nice to see and very well received. That's my report.
You know, those relationships are so incredibly valuable. There may come a time, let's hope there doesn't, but there may come a time that we need to lean on them to do the same for us. And I'm just so pleased at how hard you've worked on fostering that strong relationship. Of course, we have Laura here that we took from them, and they seem to have forgiven us for that. But it is just, those relationships really matter. So thanks that all you've done. Your words are very appropriate to express our condolences to all of them. I wondered if I could, before the Board asks you questions, could I slide one thing under your report and put Chris Martin on the spot? He loves it when I do that. I just thought it might, there's nowhere else on the agenda, Chris, where I could put you in. There's been a few questions about the Senior Volunteer Program, and I understand that a grant is no longer in existence, but I think you could explain it much better for people that are watching at home.
Chair Wood, members of the Board, the R S V P program is a grant program that is administered through the Community Grant Action Program, like AmeriCorps or the Senior Companion Program. This is a select piece of that that really provides administrative support to collect volunteer hours, coordinate volunteers, and support organizations as they need volunteers in our area. This grant has been going on for over 20 years, and so the area agency team has done a fantastic job supporting all of the organizations in our community, helping them develop strong relationships with their volunteers, as well as us basically trying to create a culture of volunteerism within our community. No agency in Idaho actually applied to renew this grant at this time, simply because it has not changed its funding model in so long. And so while it's a great grant that does some incredible support, the workload that's required to manage that grant, it simply couldn't be, couldn't be done with the grant funding that was available. And so we've watched this very closely. We've looked at it over several years, and at this time, it just, it just became the right opportunity for us to step aside from this grant. We want to support the agencies and organizations that have volunteers, but do it through a different way, not using those grant dollars.
Okay. Thank you for that. We've had some questions about it, so I appreciate you clarifying. Board, any questions of the President's Report or of Chris Martin?
I had a question of the President, maybe a comment more than anything. I mean, the excitement on campus with the All-Star game and everything, the basketball tournament was apparent, and also the tri-state wrestling tournament that goes on here. And I guess I just want to make a comment that those activities, plus the other activities that we have that draw students in and sort of highlight the campus, probably good evidence why we need a new gymnasium.
Trustee Banducci.
That's a nice segue.
Not on the agenda, but okay.
Well, that's kind of interesting, too, because my wife and I were at an event at the resort on Friday evening, and we noticed some very tall young men there. And then after I noticed the duffel bags and things they had, it reminded me that they were here for the basketball tournament. So it must have been staying down at the resort, I'm guessing, or visiting down there.
They do. They stay at the resort.
Yeah, so. Anyway, I have a question, if I may ask. It's, I'm going to put it under the President's Report, but Chris has a heads-up on this one, because I told him I was going to ask. We've been getting these financial reports, that's what I'm going to call them, quarterly income statements. And so we had one in our book, and I don't see any other place on the agenda that really lends itself to it. And so I took the new one we got, and I compared it to the one that we had gotten previously, which was back in November. And I had asked Chris if he could hit any highlights that he would like to point out between this one and this one, because I had a few things that jumped out at me, and so I thought I'd give him the lead.
By all means, and thank you for providing this.
Absolutely. Chair Wood, Trustee Banducci, I apologize. I've only got the recent one that was just produced for this board meeting in front of me. But a couple of highlights just to note, as we, as we look at our financials at this moment in time, as of February, we are right on track where we would expect to be. We're at 70% of our revenues compared to budget. So year-to-date, we're trending really, really well. Couple things to note. Our operating revenue came in at $8.6 million year-to-date. And then as we go down the list here, the total revenues is $33.5 million year-to-date as of February. And our expenses are also trending where we'd expect them to be. Payroll came in at 62% of our budget at this time, at $16.3 million. And then trending down to the general expenses, we're currently at 77% of our budget expense year-to-date, at $6.3 million. At this moment in time, total expenditures for the college are right at 60% of budgeted, and that leaves us with a net income of $4.6 million.
Great. Trustee Banducci.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, now this budget goes through what date, Chris?
This budget is as of the close of February.
That's not what I mean. I'm sorry. As we're calculating the percentages, what's the end of the fiscal year?
The fiscal year is June 30th.
Okay, so we've got three more months approximately, and this was due to the end of February. So actually, we were about two-thirds of the way, so about 67%. And so as we look at the trend lines, we're a little above on some, a little below on some. I noticed that the benefits were at 57%. That was one that looked like we were maybe saving some money on. And then we were a little bit high on the general expenses at 77%. So those two seem to be kind of the two outliers to me, at first glance.
You would be correct. Benefits are very unique, because a large portion of our employee base, the way we spread those benefits for faculty are in line with their contracts. And so we're expending them per the contract. So the benefit calculation for some faculty is to spread over the 10 months, is how we're accruing that, in line with their contract. So while we have that expense year-round, we're accruing it based off of their contract. And then the other piece I would note is that supplies are trending high. You'll see that as we go here. We're at 102.29% in general supplies. Part of that is we authorize the purchases of a new supply line and equipment to outfit a lab in Sandpoint to support education in Sandpoint. That was not part of the budget. We will be covering that through their savings, but we did apply that to the supply and equipment lines.
Insurance, is that health insurance? Because that's pretty high, and then you had a couple more that were in the 90s. And I won't hit all of them. Communications, I don't know if that's phone, or IT, or if that's Ken needing more dough, or what, but the insurance one jumped out, too, being in the insurance industry. I was kind of curious.
The insurance is our risk insurance.
P and C, then, on the umbrella side, okay.
So all the benefits for health insurance are covered under the benefit line.
Okay. That's why I was wondering, I wasn't sure on that breakout. What, have we had claims issues, or just?
No claims issues. We budget based off of the prior year for eye cramp, and so sometimes there's an increase that we're not aware of when we set the budget.
Okay.
Is that it, Tom?
You know what? I think so. Thank you, Chris. And I talked to him previously, so just so everybody knows, I did not put him on the spot. He was, knew I was going to ask, so.
Oh, Trustee Howard.
More by way of curiosity than anything, but I look up at the operating revenue and the non-operating revenues under, is 319% of what we had budgeted. And that's kind of an interesting observation, but where'd that money come from?
So your observation is correct, and as we're going into the next year's fiscal budget, we've already adjusted the budget up for this, this upcoming year. But everything that doesn't apply to our day-to-day operations falls under that non-operating revenue. An example of that would be, we recently sold the Timber Hall Building, which was the testing center. You may have seen it. It was lifted up and taken off campus this week.
It was in Nick Now. They showed the picture.
It was in the Nick Now. So the revenue that we received from that sale went into non-operating revenue. So anytime we have things that are one-offs or are unexpected, they're hitting that line. The other thing that's showing in that line is the indirect revenue we receive from some of our large grants. And so we've been very conservative in how we budgeted that, because the grants are coming to a close. And so we're just now closing out the latest TACT grant. And so next year, we And so next year, we would not expect to see this level of miscellaneous non-operating revenue.
Yeah, thank you. The other question I had was on the tuition and fees line, the first line of the document. And we're at 63% of the year-to-date budget. But do we have any more tuition and fees coming in for this fiscal year?
Chair Wood, trustee Howard, we do. And so the way we account for that is even though we've received all of those funds now on a cash basis, from an accrual basis, we're actually accounting for those every month of the semester. And so we've divided that up to try to help us better track the revenue compared to our expenses.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you, Ken, because I did have a couple of questions on the revenue side, and I completely overlooked that. And you've actually hit on a couple of things. And I noticed the CTE and the dual credit, both, I'm guessing that's from increased enrollment. Both those are fairly significant where we're at now, 95 and 100. And you spoke to the, what you call the non-operating revenues. I also see the pretty good number on the miscellaneous tax receipts. Can you put just a little bit of context to that? It's shown 173%. So what's the source of a miscellaneous tax receipt?
So that's very similar to the non-operating, things that are occurring that were unplanned. And so the $456,000 is what we had budgeted there. You're correct, we're currently at $787,000. And so all of, on our quarterly taxes that we receive from Cootney County, if we're trending higher, that's where we're placing those. And other tax receipts that we may receive, I'm trying to think of a good example that I can share with you, but there are other tax revenues that we receive as one-offs, that's where those are placed, that are outside of our current taxing stream.
Like the, when an urban renewal district closes down?
And we get that in the mid-year that we're not expecting? Yes. Thank you.
So then looking at this on the bottom line, if you will, I see we're at 70% for total revenues, and we're at 60.68% for total expenses. So even though we've had a few things go high on the expense side, because we have a couple of nice pluses on the revenue side, we look like we're ahead of schedule here, looking pretty good for our budget.
Chair Wood, trustees, we are trending really well at this time. We continue to watch this and are working to make sure that we're ending the year hopefully closer to our budgeted amount.
Thank you.
More reserves.
So board, I asked for Chris to put this in the packet, because we had asked for it some time ago, but I don't know if we ever said how often we want it. So do you have some thoughts on how often we'd like to see where we're going? Go ahead.
We actually, we did have that conversation.
We did, okay.
At least that time you thought quarterly.
Okay.
But we can adjust that if we need to.
From a guy in the industry and a financial analysis, I think quarterly helps us out to smooth the trend lines a little bit. I think from a month to month, it could be a little too choppy, be a little too close to the forest for the trees.
Great.
Just my perspective on that. I think quarterly is, and that would be more normal, how we would analyze. I mean, when I analyze, we analyze businesses, things like that, in the corporate world and the financial sector, we basically do it on a quarterly basis also.
Yeah. And maybe next time, Chris, I'll just ask and put you on the agenda since we have so many questions. So, thank you. Okay, that takes us onto old business, our second reading, our Head Start policy of child records procedure. Beth Ann Fuller, welcome.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan and guests, thank you for allowing me to come for the second reading of the Head Start privacy of child records procedure. Upon review of Mark Lyons and with minor amendments, we believe that this procedure will meet the requirements of the Head Start Program Performance Standards 1302.20 and through 24. And we would ask for an approval as this has been amended.
Okay, thank you. Board, you remember we reviewed this, it's been two months now, and I believe there were some amendments that, Mr. Howard, you might have made. And do you have any questions or more conversation, discussion on this?
Yeah, I think my only question was, had it been reviewed and was there a standard policy that we could adopt or copy? And the fact that you reviewed this with the attorney, and he's comfortable with it and you're comfortable that it's consistent with what the policy requires, my concern before was us just doing it from the ground up without referring to any other authority. So if it's had that review, I'm happy.
Mr. Lyons.
If I may, thank you, Chair Wood, members of the board. We did review it with Beth Ann. We did go back and look at the law, and it is consistent. There are some, one of the things that I mentioned at the last meeting is we wanted to see if the FERPA, the Family Education Privacy Act, would apply to this. In fact, we confirmed that the dollars do come from Health and Human Services, that money. It is compliant with the regulations for that kind of privacy. There is another federal law that is the IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And some of those students are, or some of those participants in the program are IDEA students. That has a separate privacy procedure that is different. However, those records are kept by the local school districts, the local education authorities, is that what it is? LEAs. And we did put in the amendment, which you have as a red line version, we did put clarification of that at the end of the procedure. So I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that we'd reviewed this. The amended procedure is the one that we're seeking to have approved.
Okay, thank you.
So on that note, then, we should go ahead and insert this, and the pink one was kind of the original draft, and as you said, we see the red lines here. And this is what we'll see back in a clean version?
Yes, the red line will simply have these accepted, and that will be what you're passing.
Okay.
Board, any further questions? Not, do I have a motion?
I'd move that we adopt the Head Start privacy policy for child records procedure.
Do I have a second? Second by trustee Murray. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Beth Ann. I'm sure, I think we're going to have you back. Is that it, that we all have you for tonight?
No, she's tab eight.
Oh, the whole tab. Okay. Thank you. That takes us to tab two, second reading, information technology policy, 3.08.03. Ken Wardinsky, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Wood, members of trustees, President McLennan, Attorney Lyons, and colleagues. Let me get settled. I apologize for not being at the last board meeting to present the first readings of these. I had gotten the flu plague that was going around, so I was unable to be here. So my, thanks to my Vice President Martin for presenting these. Policy and Procedure 3.08.03 is a new policy we're presenting to the board on data stewardship, security, and protection. Just briefly, this basically outlines the adoption of a stewardship model of ownership and the control of data, the classification of that data based on its risk to the institution, and then applying an appropriate security method to that data. In short, that means that you basically have an owner of a data, a custodian of a data, and then the user, and there's different responsibilities each of them have. And then things like social security numbers would be a very restricted, critical piece of information, and so we would put the most security controls on those types of things. Things like tests that students take, or copies of tests, would be more sensitive data. If it got stolen, it wouldn't be necessarily in the front page of the newspaper type of thing. And then you have public data, which is what we freely give on our website. If somebody got a copy of our website or a copy of a NIC now, it probably wouldn't be the end of the world, and we want people to know what's going on in NIC. So that's kind of that explanation of that part of it. So I'll stand for any questions.
Board, any questions on this policy? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move that the proposed policy on data stewardship, security, and protection, Policy 3.0803, be approved by the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Howard. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Great. Moving right along.
The next policy is a second reading for Policy 3.08.04 on information technology security incident response. This is a new policy for NIC, and basically outlines that every person that uses data at NIC has the responsibility to report an incident or suspected incident with that data. So if their machine's infected, if they lost their laptop with information on it, if they lost a flash drive, it's every user's individual to report that to IT. And then IT will then classify the incident based on the criticality of it. If someone came to us and said, I lost my laptop and I had all my student data on there, first that would be not a good thing, but then we would have to do a lot more investigation. Or if we were, if there was an incident where information got out and we needed to investigate how that got out, we would go into a formal incident response to do that. When we're doing legal matters and other things investigatively, it's better to have a framework involved that we go through step by step. If the data from the policy that you just passed is restricted, that highly sensitive one, it automatically needs a PC member involvement on it, and that's called a management team. And then the policy also says that all incidents will be handled confidentially. They shouldn't be spreading that around to other people until we really get to the treatment.
Right. Board, any questions on this policy?
If I may ask, just one in general. And Ken, we've got six policies that we're going to discuss today, that you're going to talk about. Three are the second reading, and three are the first reading. And I noticed in our packet that we had procedures for two of them, and I'd have to look to remember which ones, because I looked at them. Are all the rest new, then? So we have two that are kind of continuing in some form from where they were, and then four that are new? Would that be fair to say? Because there was no procedure provided with them, so I was wondering if that means there isn't one yet?
I have procedures for all of these.
Okay. Just was wondering, because a lot of times you guys have been very graciously providing the procedures, so we have it as a reference as we look at the policy. And I noticed that I'd gotten a couple of them, but I didn't see procedures for the others, so that's why I was wondering if maybe they were new, which is okay, I just was curious.
Anything further?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure if my question was understood or if I understood the answer.
We don't have the procedures in front of you, but we do have procedures for all of these policies.
And so all these policies are existing policies that we're modifying or amending or?
Sorry. Trustee Vanducci, all of these policies are new to NIC.
Thank you. That was really my bottom, my underlying question.
There were two existing policies that we've done in the past. The six in front of you now, the three for the second reading and the three for the first reading are all new policies for NIC.
And the two that you had, are those going away in lieu of these six, or are these six in addition to those two?
These are in addition to those policies.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, board?
I do have a question, and that is, institutions such as ours across the country are dealing with technology and how we protect it and how we deal with it. Are you drawing any of this policy language from some other authority? Are you, is this something that is, you're putting together yourself? I mean, how are we coming up with these policies?
Thank you, trustee Howard. These policies are brought from many different policies and guidelines that are from federal standards. When I first started, we, I kind of culminated from about 20 different schools, a different policy language. The difficulty we had with the Senate in that was it was too technical in nature and not really easy for an end user to understand it. So we worked with the faculty senate and a subgroup, which I'm very thankful for, to actually culminate these and then stretch the spirit of the policy, and then the procedure of the policy, and then a technical guideline that follows all of these policies. The other thing is the work of the state, going to the top five security controls from the governor's executive order, and then just using national standards, and then the federal cybersecurity initiative to implement these critical controls, all relate to having these policies in place of how you do that. So most, all of this work is based on best practice.
Okay. Just to follow up to that, then, if you've taken a number of examples and sort of distilled them down into a more readable format, if I understand your answer to that last question, are you, do you feel comfortable that in distilling them down, we're going to still meet the essence of what's necessary for the policies? Sometimes you make it too simple. And you miss something. And I guess I'm not smart enough to know, quite frankly, whether we're missing something or whether we got it all. And so I'm asking you, do you feel, I'm sure you feel comfortable that we've got it all, but did you, in simplifying it, is there something we need to review or something like that before we pass on this?
Trustee Howard, I feel very confident that these will be very enforceable when and if the time ever comes that we need to enforce these policies. I believe that they are the spirit of the policy that we're trying to intend, and I believe the technical guidelines and things that we do through another committee, in addition to the procedures, gives us enough leeway to actually meet and match the standards as they change nationally and federally.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion for this policy?
I'll make a motion to approve Information Technology Policy 3.08.04.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ken, for this next one, I'm going to do this correctly. So we're going to have you speak about this, then we'll have a motion in a second, and then we'll ask questions. That's the right way.
Thank you, Chair Wood. This is Policy and Procedure 3.08.05 on user authentication. This policy speaks to the fact that NIC's IT department will be the sole provider of user credentials for access to our network.
Okay. Do you have a motion on this policy?
I'd move that we accept the user authentication policy 3.08.05.
Second.
Trustee Howard, second. Discussion. Any questions for Ken? Hearing none. I know how that works now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ken. And that's going to take us into, we have one more?
No.
We'll go into new business.
New business.
So we'll do our first reading, tab five, Information Technology Policy 3.08.06.
Members of the board, Policy 3.08.06 is a new policy for North Idaho College. This policy relates to media sanitation and disposal. This policy, basically, this policy states that any media leaving the control of NIC will have any data that is on that media destroyed in a way that is not recoverable before it leaves our possession.
Board, this is first reading. Do you have any questions of Ken on this policy?
So, I'm sorry.
Trustee Murray.
So what is the process? So if you have an older computer, just wiping the hard drive, and what kind of time does that take? I know it needs to be done, but I just, what's it look like? What do you guys do?
Thank you, trustee Murray. The process we have is a disk which is affectionately called boot and nuke. You basically put the disk in, fire it up, and it takes about a half hour per device. And it does three, four passes on the hard drive itself. It writes all zeros, then all ones, then a combination, then a reverse combination. And writing that many times to the data meets the national standard for making data unreadable. If the data is unable to be done that way, then you can go to different methods such as degossing or shredding the device.
So it's as simple as your technician, he just puts that disk in, or she puts that disk in, can walk away from the computer and it takes place so that they can do other things?
Exactly.
Question, and then you dispose of the hard drive, how, after you've done that?
We'll either put it up for disposal to recycling, or we have another company that'll come in and buy those devices from us.
Are they still usable at that point? It's just that you've overwritten the data in such a way that it can't be recovered?
Exactly. They're still usable and for resale. Sometimes the age of the device, though, is easier to dispose of it. And then when you think about, like, copy machines, we pull the hard drives out of those and do that to them as well.
Sure.
It depends on the device and the age of the device.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Dunlap, did you have a question?
My question has been answered, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ken, I had a question. You know how banks do shred day? Are you able to do something on a larger scale for the community? Are you able to do something on a larger scale for the community?
I haven't seen it here in Cortlandia because the company that we use for the shredding actually charges us for that, too.
No, I don't mean shredding. I mean for this, for computers.
Exactly. And I only know of it in my old life, with that the college actually hosted a shred day where we had somebody come in, you were able to bring in your electronic devices for disposal and shredding, but I haven't seen anything here.
Oh, is that something we could do, President McClellan?
You could look into it.
Look into it.
I don't know how expensive, if it's expensive, no, but I, there's so many people that have old computers and you put them in a closet because you don't know what to do with your hard drive.
I think that's a great idea. If we could do it at some nominal expanse and then service to the community and draw more people to our campus and value added, I mean, there's a lot of positives to that potentially. Good idea.
All right. Any more further questions on this policy? We'll move on to the next one. And that is Information Technology Policy 3.08.07. Tab 6.
Members of the Board, this is another new policy for N I C. This policy covers cloud services. Just to give you a definition of cloud services, cloud services are any software that we run that are not physically located on N I C property. So they're usually run through a web browser over the internet, those type of things. This policy states that any employee or unit that wants to use a cloud service needs to discuss that use of that service with I T in the business office and possibly legal, depending on what they want to do with that service. The reasoning for that is that if you have, for instance, I'll use a common one called Dropbox, which is where you can save files online, the personal kind of free signup click-through agreement does not give you the protections that an enterprise level would do. For instance, they don't encrypt your information there, so you don't know how secure it is because it's a freebie. So we want employees to use the ones that we license through N I C because then we ensure FERPA protections, we ensure data security, we ensure data recovery. And more importantly, if we ever decide not to use the service, we're guaranteed a certificate of destruction, meaning that they've cleaned up all of our data since we own it. So there's just different contractual things when you use cloud services that you want to make sure are in place, and this policy speaks to that.
All right. Thank you again, Board. This is first reading. Do you have any questions on this policy? Trustee Bandici.
Couple of questions, actually. I was at a legal seminar recently on issues facing schools with regard to the internet and the use of internet material. And the issue that came up was a balance between free speech and use of the internet and that schools were being put into a situation where people might modify a Facebook, maybe put something defaming on it and comes out under the moniker of the school or it comes out under some kind of a connection with the school. And so there needed to be policies in place in order to protect the school that they're not endorsing misuse of especially cloud services. And this policy, at least generally, I would think, seems to address that, except it doesn't apply to students.
Correct.
Why is that?
Students, a lot of this is engagement in different services because of FERPA protections and that, and we are stewards of the student data that they give us. Because of FERPA, we have to protect that data as much as possible. Yet if a student voluntarily puts their information into a different system, the student takes ownership of that responsibility. When we put their data in that system, we still have that responsibility and that liability to the student. However, a student can act as an individual and do that themselves.
My concern is protection of the, our institution in terms of modifications or use that students make of our system and needing to protect the institution from a lawsuit because we, they used our vehicle in order to spread defamatory material or whatever. And that's why I thought that this particular policy certainly applies to administration and faculty and staff. But what policy is there then to allow you to control student misuse?
Trustee Howard, that's a great question. That would be Policy 3.08.01 on acceptable use that we passed recently. And those speak to general use of technology in general across the board for N I C. So if they're doing anything illegal or uploading illegal images on our file servers and that, that speaks directly to the acceptable use policy, which kind of blankets all of these.
My concern is that that runs smack dab up against freedom of speech issues when people start putting things on the internet and are trying to control that. So we have to have some kind of a system to review it so that there's a due process on that. Do we have anything like that so we don't run afoul of people making a claim that we're infringing upon the freedom of speech?
For most of the cloud services we have, we control the data that goes up to them, except for like a general file sharing program. For instance, we don't actively monitor their student emails unless there's a notification to do so because there's an expected kind of reason of privacy on that. When we're talking about Facebook and that, that's usually privately owned by an individual, so then we would be reaching out to monitor student Facebook pages. There's nothing we can really do to control that, even if they do use our internet, because we do offer public internet as well.
Okay. I guess maybe I would ask you then to just take another look at that because there seems to be a growing concern that educational institutions may be subject to some kind of legal action if they don't have a policy in place in order to make sure that their systems are not being used inappropriately. So I just ask you to look at it. I trust your judgment on whether we're covered or not. I just wanted to make sure. I thought this covered it, but if it doesn't cover students, then maybe there's another policy that does.
And Trustee Howard, I can assure you that we are looking into improvements on our network security aspect of monitoring for active, not only malware things, but actually just URL filtering and other things. For instance, we don't, an example would be we don't want an employee doing illegal gambling online because they would be using our network to do something illegal. That would go against acceptable use, but how would we know it is kind of, I think, to your point. So we're adding, we're going to be adding things to, can it give us better insight into that?
Well, but not just employees, but also students.
Correct.
Because students have access to all of this information.
Correct. But a lot of times we also allow students to use their own devices and we can't infringe on their properties.
Trustee Bandici.
Ken, just a quick extension on my earlier question because I kind of threw it out there and I was maybe a little bit confused also. You guys provided procedures for '06 and '08, and was that one for '07? I think that threw me off that it was only two of the three because normally we get a procedure for all of the policies. And I do want to note, and I went back and looked, it occurred to me that I had seen those procedures for '03, '04, and '05, and they were given us, to us for the first reading. So they are in my book, but here with the first reading. So thank you, and I do appreciate that we do get those procedures. It puts context to the policies. So I would just appreciate if you guys would continue to do that, and we just didn't get one for '07 at this time. So I think that's what kind of threw me off.
And I'm happy to review my copy.
I may take you up on that, sir. But anyway, but yes, we are getting them, and I guess that must be our standard of practice is to get those with the first reading. So I wanted to clarify that I did have those. I'd forgotten I had reviewed them.
Okay. This takes us on to Tab 7, First Reading Information Technology Policy 3.08.08.
Thank you, Members of the Board. Policy 3.08.08 speaks, is a new policy and speaks to creating a mandatory annual information training security awareness program for all employees on an annual basis. The gist of this policy is that we can put a million dollars into network security and technology. However, if a user gives out their username and password, that all goes away. So to invest in a security training program for, to make it mandatory for all employees, to give them the tools to recognize things like what is a phishing email, what's not right, how to report things, how to be safe on the internet, makes sense to protect our investments in our data.
Okay. Board, this is first reading. Any questions of Ken? Yes, Trustee Dunlap.
Ken, for the required training, will that be all done online? And so that would suggest that there's a record of taking the course and then completing it.
Absolutely. Trustee Dunlap, we're looking at two different systems now and kind of making our decision. Both of them work very much like an online course where we put the users in there and we can track them and their completion. So we're just kind of vetting out if we're going to go the same one that the state decided to use or the one that we were previously looking at.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right. Thank you for getting through these policies. Nice job. Nice work on this.
Does make you feel a little more secure about what we've got going, doesn't it?
Yes. I would say, if you don't mind me saying, Ken, you know, just that, first your policies and then of course the planning that goes into I T, it's very impressive. You're doing very nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to Tab 8, First Reading N I C Head Start Continuation Grant. Beth Ann Fuller, welcome back.
So Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, and guests, thank you for allowing me to come forward with our Head Start Continuation Grant application. So our grant application has been announced and the projected funding for submission of this application to operate our Head Start program came in a guidance letter allocating funding in an approved flat funding manner. Our program's total funding level was offered at $2,722,415, which is identical to our last year's funding. The purpose of our applying for our fourth year of our five-year grant period funding is to continue to provide our high-quality comprehensive services to children and families in North Idaho. Board approval of this funding application is required, and the financial impact is no impact to North Idaho College since federal appropriations, private gifts and donations fund our Head Start program. So in attachments A through H, if I may, Chair Wood, just explain really quickly each piece. Attachment A includes our grant application narrative. Attachment B is our Head Start organizational chart. The attachment C includes our program budget proposal. Attachment D is our E R C policy, which includes, which is a new inclusion, this used to come to you separately, the criteria point system for prioritizing and selecting children to be part of our program. Our program option policy, service area, selection of target area, and our allocation of where we have those enrollment slots in our target area.
Okay. Board, this is first reading, and this is a grant we're familiar with. Do we have any questions specific? She, go ahead. Trustee Dunlap.
Beth Ann, you indicated that the grant this forthcoming year is the same amount as it was in the previous year, I think. And are there any concerns that you have increased costs that would not be covered by that same amount?
Chair Wood, Trustee Dunlap. One thing that has come out just this last week was actually an increase for funding to Head Start and how that will be funneled to programs. Number one will be in a 2.2 percent COLA. So the increased costs that we were seeing coming forward were possible increases in fringe mostly. So although it's not available yet for tonight, they are looking at the wording for that COLA and it will come out in another funding opportunity. So that we're very excited about that and that will really help. So that should be coming in the next few weeks, and they will let us know how they are going to let us apply that, either through a budget revision or they will return the grant and ask us to include a COLA. And there will also be funding available for other types of services, and they are still at the Office of Head Start trying to determine how that will funnel to each regional area.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Murray.
Along those same lines, you've come before us previously, and there's always been talk about we're not serving all those that we could. There's kids left out. Is a grant restricted year by year to the total amount you received the previous year? Or is there a way to show need based on numbers and ask for a higher amount?
So Chair Wood, Trustee Murray, we are allocated a specific number of slots each time that they offer the grant. The only other opportunities for having more slots than we already have allocated to us would be through any of the additional funding that may be available to Head Start, and that would be a grant application on behalf of N I C Head Start to look at an expansion. The only expansion that I know of would be for early Head Start and/or childcare partnerships, and that language is not out yet, but we are anticipating that to be released.
Trustee Bandici.
Just very quick, and this is more of an observation, Beth Ann, so if I'm missing it, tell me, but seems like every year when we have the slots allocated, you guys make a little bit of an adjustment here or there and you move stuff around, but it appears you guys must have kind of hit the sweet spot in as efficiently as possible allocating these slots based on the needs and where the resources need to be allocated and dedicated because I see no adjustments from one fiscal year to the next. So it looks like we're standing pat. It's the first time I think I've seen that in the six years I've been doing this. So just, so it's cool, just feel good about that and right where you need to be.
Definitely. Chair Wood, Trustee Bandici, we do a community assessment update to our, once, we do one large community assessment, and then we do updates each year of our five-year grant. And in this community assessment update, we felt, just like you just were able to articulate, that we were just serving the right, a number of children in the right areas.
Okay. Well done.
Beth Ann, this talks, we're in the fourth year of a five-year grant. What happens at year five? Is that just the cycle of a grant? I don't really understand. You have to apply every year, so why do they call it a five-year grant?
So Chair Wood, it's considered a continuation grant. So when they do review our program and monitor our program, if for any reason we were held to be deficient and needed to recompete immediately for our grant, that is a possibility, but if we do not meet any of that criteria of any kind of deficiency, major noncompliance, each year they will offer us to put in an application for that. And as long as we're meeting the progress on our five-year goals, as long as we're meeting all of the Head Start performance standards, they will continue to offer that throughout that five-year period. What they do is they give us an opportunity once every five years to put in what they call a baseline application, which is a much longer application with, so the community assessment is a full community assessment. The different pieces that we do are just more intense for that, for that fifth year to make sure that going into that, the first, the next five-year cycle, that we have set new goals based on what we know are self-assessment goals and improvement plans. It just lets you reset the clock and decide in that next five years, you might change the scope or change a program option perhaps, but it gives you an opportunity to do a larger scale application and propose any kind of major changes you'd like to make. Otherwise, you stick in that five-year period primarily without major changes to Head Start funding to your five-year plan.
Okay. Thank you. Board, any further questions on this first reading? Okay, I guess we'll see you back next month.
If I might just say, because there was not a meeting last month and this grant is due by April 1st.
Oh, sure.
We hope to have a pattern of being able to bring it for its first and second reading, but our grant application funding and different things comes about less than 60 days before it's due. Sometimes 30 days before it's due, but we, because there was not an opportunity to bring a first reading, this, I would just hope and ask that we be able to seek approval this evening.
Yeah, I think that's a very valid request. We understand the time constriction. And so Board, she's looking for a motion for approval. Do I have a motion?
Do we have to waive the second reading first or do we do that all together?
No, we can just, we can just waive it. We don't have to make it.
Make that part of your motion.
That's what I was wondering. Yes, sir. I'll make the motion. I make the motion that we waive the second reading, that we go ahead and approve the Head Start Continuation Grant.
Second.
All right. I have a second from Trustee Dunlap. I think he beat you to it.
I just, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Discussion.
In our board action as well, I just had one other additional request that is about this year, and there's a board action form that would, would. this year, and there's a board action form that would would follow that, and it's an emergent funding issue for this year that I was going to present, so I just wanted to...
Did you want to present it now?
Whenever would be good for you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Well, I guess the question would be, are they germane to one another in the sense that they're linked, that we need to have one motion for go? Okay, so separate motions. Okay, then my motion still stands.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, go ahead.
Just a small additional request for this budget year of FY '18 to move $7,011 from supplies to equipment for an emergent repair of our HVAC system in St. Mary's. And if we had had any funding in the equipment line item, you would never usually need to make a motion for that small amount of money, but because we did not anticipate equipment purchase, there was no money in that line item. So my ask would be to consider moving $7,011 from our supplies budget to our equipment so we could get that HVAC system in St. Mary's.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Trustee Banducci.
Observation question. Of course, there's no way you could budget for an unplanned event, you know.
Right.
How do you propose to be able to do that out of your supplies, though?
So out of supplies, we do have savings in our classroom supplies, particularly of about $8,000, I think primarily because Friends of Head Start decided to give our centers $1,000 toward their strategic plans, so we have some additional funding available to move from one category to another.
That was timely.
Yeah.
Very good then, thank you.
Board, any further questions? If none, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the the transfer of the necessary funds from the supplies to equipment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Anything else, Beth Ann?
Sorry. Thank you, Beth Ann. Our next agenda item, Tab 9. This is a request to approve the agreement with the City of Coeur d'Alene. This is in reference to the BLM property, that long-sought-after BLM property that isn't quite still ours yet. But what you have before you, Board, is a contract that has been reviewed and approved and signed by the City of Coeur d'Alene, and I would ask Dr. McLennan to go ahead and walk us through it.
Sure. Trustee Wood. So this has been in the works for some time, and as you know, the college has an interest in the in the BLM property designated on the attached map for possible future use. And so this has really been a project to work with with the city in a collaborative way to garner an agreement through a very complicated process with first the BLM and then ultimately Congress to to secure that property for the college's future use. The agreement essentially memorializes their their agreement to do whatever they can actively to help facilitate that process when it's legal and appropriate for us to to move in that direction. There's some other features in there that are fairly important to mention, that there's a an intent to waive any setback requirements on that property should the college and our facility master planning want to get as as close to that line as possible prior to any transfer of the property to the college. There's also, so the consideration is for the actual expense that it will take to remove that, the current structure that's on that property, and as well as then to cover the cost of the element in the plan of the BLM plan that creates a trail and essentially improves the that that land for public use for recreation or education. There's also a related element in there to provide the city with $150,000 for memorial milled, memorial field renovation, and that's linked to our use of that field over a long period of time with our women's softball team and to help us become more in compliance for Title IX-related issues in terms of quality of fields, equitable equipment, and things like that. I can be happy to answer questions. You've been involved in this along the way, so.
We have, and I actually would ask our attorney, Mr. Lyons, you were very hands-on in crafting this agreement. Did you want to add some comments?
Thank you, Chair Wood, members of the board. As as President McLennan did say, this has been in process for a long time. I think what's, the things that are important here are the cooperative arrangement. The city will continue to to be the the lessee of this property, but it does provide better use for NIC of its property with the setback waiver potential. I don't know that we would really build up on that on that strip anyway, but if we can get, if we need to have buildings closer than the setbacks would otherwise allow, that gives us ability. Also, the, there is the potential to have this property eventually deeded in fee to the city or to NIC, and part of this agreement is that if it can only be deeded to the city, then the city has agreed in return for what we're doing, that they will deed this parcel to NIC. So I think that's a, that's kind of an important element of it. So that's all I wanted to add.
All right, and then I wanted to add that we did ask to have NIC be on the design committee for the grandstands, the remodel of the grandstands, because we're looking for changing room areas and hopefully maybe lockers and maybe a area for coaches. Those are all things that'll be worked out by people that the president has assigned to that committee, and the city is happy to have us be part of that with them. Go ahead.
Chair, we've actually been formally invited to be involved in that process.
Perfect, great. Trustee Banducci.
Just for the record, want to confirm, probably from Mr. Martin, just where the funds, the source of the funds, the two parts of it, the $228,000 and the $150,000, and then what our timeline, our estimated timeline would be for the disbursement of those funds, and if they'd be in lump sums at some point, or if they would be kind of a gradual disbursement as costs arose.
Chair Wood, trustee Banducci, the agreement stipulates that within 30 days of an invoice from the city, we would, we would pay this this balance to the city, and we have cash on hand in fund balance. That is our our proposal on how we cover this expense.
Trustee Banducci.
Follow on, please. Let me phrase the question slightly differently, because I had saw that language, seen that language in the contract. When would we anticipate receiving an invoice from the city, and would the invoice be one lump sum invoice or large ones, or would they kind of bill us on an ongoing basis, you know, with maybe some retention at the end or something?
Chair Wood, trustee Banducci, thank you for that clarification. I am unsure, but I would, I would anticipate if I was the city, I would send a lump sum bill for this this project so that they can have the cash flow to move forward with with both of their facility projects.
Thank you. Trustee Howard.
I guess I have a couple of questions. The provision of the $150,000 for improvement of Memorial Field, I think in earlier discussions, was predicated in part on the fact that NIC utilizes Memorial Field for its softball teams, and and that we certainly appreciate the cooperation that we've had with the city in terms of using that field and hence our agreement to provide $150,000 for improvement of the field facilities. What I don't see in this agreement is any provision that by making that payment, NIC continues to enjoy the right to use that field. Now, I don't know that it has to be in this agreement. It could be a separate agreement, but I don't know of any kind of agreement where we, we're paying $150,000 according to this agreement, and we're not getting anything for it. I think the understanding was we were going to get the use of the field as necessary for our athletic teams.
So we can both answer that, but go, you go ahead.
Well, trustee Wood, why don't you answer that?
Okay, well, my understanding, and I'll probably need you to clarify this, is that is a MOU that is in place, has been in place for quite some time, that the city works with, Bill Greenwood from the city works with Al Williams, but is that correct?
Trustee Wood, that that is correct. We we have a longstanding MOU. We just actually signed that a couple months ago, I think, and it defines the relationship between NIC and the city in terms of responsibility for the field and use of the field. Chris, do you want to add anything to that? Because we, we now provide some support for maintaining the field as part of that agreement, and that's the, that's the, in that sense, the quid pro quo for the usage part of it. The the intent on the $150,000 was to 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 supply up an appropriate portion of the funding for the renovations underway for that field for the continued use of it, but it wasn't necessarily tied outside of that agreement as it already exists. I suppose we could connect it that way. I don't know that we, we need to.
Well, the reason for my concern is that somebody were to look at this agreement and say, we gave them $150,000, what did we get for it? The agreement doesn't reflect that there was, there was consideration in another agreement, the MOU, or in some longstanding policy, and I just thought that it would be appropriate to make sure that we, we, it was reflected someplace that we got something for this $150,000. I'm happy for it to be a separate agreement. If it's the MOU, fine, but the $150,000 was paid for something. The MOU talks about, as I understand the MOU, the last time I saw it years ago, was it pays for ongoing expenses in consideration for use of the the facility. This is an additional $150,000, and I think this is also consideration for our continued use of the facility. Having said that, I don't want to change this agreement. I'm not suggesting that. But it was a deficiency that I saw in the agreement that I thought we should cover some way. The other thing that I, I guess I wanted to comment on was we're paying $228,000, and it's not, to me, it's not clear in this agreement, but my understanding is that $228,000 is really money necessary to make the improvements on the property. The city has, as I understand it, retained architects, landscape architects, in order to fulfill the vision set forth in the BLM agreement. And while this, well, normally I would want NIC to be in control of what the $228,000 is being spent for, my understanding is that it's being spent for compliance with the BLM requirements to improve this land. And so the the $228,000 is going immediately to improve the the land that is being transferred to us, hopefully either through this agreement or through some ultimate fee agreement.
That is correct, trustee Howard, and there is a detailed budget that Chris has and the president has reviewed, and it it comes from their, I guess, their contractor that was in charge of putting that entire plan together for the entire site. And so that is the reason for the lump sum and that we're not doing it ourselves. Trustee Banducci.
Thank you, Chair. Well, can you, you raised a question, valid one, and I guess for those that may be watching, one of the questions they might have then is naturally is, okay, so we have an MOU which codifies our contribution to the ongoing maintenance of the facility and our usage of it, and you guys were referencing that it had been recently updated, signed within the last couple of months. So the the natural question then would be, how often is that MOU updated, or what is the length of term of the MOU? And are there provisions in there so that if we, I can't believe I'm going to say it, but say we got somebody at the at the city that just didn't really want to work with us and decided to change the terms of that MOU, what protects us? I mean, Mayor Widmore, we've got a good relationship with at this time and the folks that we're working with, but is there something in there that in case somehow the relationship soured that protects us in the MOU for the use of it, going back to Ken's point of we just donated, contributed $150,000 to that effort? So I'm kind of wondering, you know, what those terms are and.
Well, I would just say, before Chris answers that, I would, I would just say that we don't, that is not the only site that the MOU would cover. We use other fields. This year, we're using, because no one can be on Memorial Field, the city has worked with Al to put the teams, I can't remember exactly what park they're going to, but that's not the only, only thing covered in the MOU. I don't, I don't see a relationship falling apart from one board member or one council person. It's been decades.
And that's why I say I don't anticipate that happening, and I think the odds of it are infinitesely small, but having raised the question publicly here and pointed to the MOU maybe securing our interest, the question is simply, though, how long is that, what is the effective length of that MOU and?
And and also, I would add, I know you're going to answer this, but good, I would add that that $150,000 is not for usage. It is for renovation.
Exactly.
But but his question was valid, and your question, are we going to continue using the field? Chris, if you wouldn't?
Just securing our interest.
Chair Wood, members of the board, I will be happy to provide a copy of that MOU and send that out with the detailed piece in there, but we did a recent review of this within the last year, and it was predicated on on decades in use of the of the prior MOU, and so there are pieces in that that talk about our continued use, or if there's a change that requires us to move with advance notice from from the city so that we can work collaboratively together.
Again, I'm not concerned, Chair. It's just, since we brought it up and it's, people might be watching, they might go, huh?
Sure.
Now they hear the answer.
Do we renew that MOU every year, or is that a long-term?
Chair Wood, trustee Howard, it is, it's been an ongoing continual MOU. The last update was the first update in actually many years, so it's just been an ongoing MOU.
So it's not updated regularly?
No, sir.
So it's, so there's no stipulation for a particular time period for those renewals? It's just as the parties deem it appropriate?
I believe that is correct, and I'm happy to provide that copy so that we get the clear detail on that.
Great, thank you. Trustee Murray.
My only question is in regards to the conveyance of the title for the 29 acres, and it says the city really just desires to cooperate, and I guess I'd like something a little more concrete.
Mr. Lyons, could you respond to that?
Yes, of course, I would too as a lawyer. I'd like something pretty ironclad and concrete. This 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 parcel of land is a little bit unique, the the BLM land. It is, the city's use and lease of it is subject to federal law and the restrictions that are in place on that. It cannot be alienated by the city, and it means it cannot be transferred to us. They have to first gain fee ownership of it before they can can give it to us. Now, this, what this agreement does have in place is it has, has a requirement that if the city ever gets fee ownership of that land, that in consideration for the monies that we've paid and the cooperation, that they have a, an obligation, they certainly have a political obligation to do that for sure, but arguably they have got a legal obligation, and I, I don't know that we would ever need to strictly enforce that, but it, you know, the cooperation with the city was was pretty good on this.
Thank you.
Rick, go ahead.
I'd just add that as we went through the discussions of this, the value to the college, because of the long-term uncertainty about will it ever actually convert in the ways that we're talking about, and and the the type of improvement that's being made on that property per the BLM plan and agreement that is park-like or trail-like and pedestrian-friendly, the window to the college is obviously an important issue with that blue building being gone, and 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 for all intents and purposes, people think of that as North Idaho College as they go along Northwest Boulevard right now. So for me, and for, I think for us, the the real feature was the agreement to waive any setback requirements. That's just as valuable as, in my mind, as anything else, at least for the next 10 years or so, in terms of building out our capital facility plan that... years or so, in terms of building out our capital facility plan that, that, as Mark said, likely wouldn't build right on that spot because of its proximity to the road, you know, anyway. But we've just mediated the setback requirement by this agreement. That gives us a lot more flexibility to put a window to the campus along Northwest Boulevard.
So, we've tried to explain this, and we've kind of gotten into the discussion phase. So, board, maybe I could, if there's willingness to do a motion and a second, and then we'll go back into further discussion. I have a few other things, too. I'm learning. So, do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion that we, the board approved the agreement between North Idaho College and City of Coeur d'Alene with regard to the strip of land owned by the BLM and leased to the City of Coeur d'Alene.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by a trustee Dunlap. Okay, further discussion. Trustee Howard, were you about to?
I guess I only wanted to make mention, mostly historical note, that we tried to get this property leased to us directly from BLM, and BLM was unwilling to do that. They only wanted to deal with one entity, and that was the city. And so, then we went to BLM and said, "Okay, let us sublease it from the city." And BLM said, "No, we're not going to do that." You might be able to get that at some time in the future, but not now, not in this agreement. So, we were left with the alternative of making a separate agreement, which you have in front of you, that basically gets the city to promise to convey this to us, and we're going to pay the cost of improving the property. And at such time as we can renegotiate the lease with BLM, then we can have that strip of property, and/or if it's conveyed to us by the Congress in fee simple, then that would come to us either directly or indirectly through the city. But that was all predicated on the original demands made by BLM, that they would only deal with one entity.
And that's a very good point, because this has been going on for a long time, and I know that you went to a number of those meetings and tried to work this out for us. But we will have immediate access through this agreement to utilize the land. And one of the discussions were, what, what should we do with this? We should use it for education. And so, that's something I'd like the board to consider, and we can bring it back another night for an agenda item. But I'd like to, in the future, set up a committee. I have a former board member by the name of Judy Meyer, who's willing to sit on the committee, and she had some wonderful ideas about the landscaping, how it could be educational landscaping, and we could start using this right away as an education piece. So, keep that in mind. I'll bring it back to you and see if you're interested. Any other further discussion on this? Chris, this is something we want to do tonight, right? Because we missed last month?
Chair Wood, yes. If that's possible, we would like to get this back to the city.
So, we'll have to waive, in your motion, we'll waive that second reading. That was part of your motion, if I recall?
It was?
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we waive the requirement of a second reading.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All right, so we'll take action on the first motion.
Mine was just amended.
You just amended it? Okay. All right, so we'll take action on the amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Mark, for the hard work, and Dr. McLennan, and Chris. Appreciate all that went into this. A long time coming, so thank you. All right. Our next item is to reschedule the April board meeting, but I don't know what I'm rescheduling it to.
You initially had mentioned possibly the 16th of the month.
April 16th, Monday.
Which was Monday, and I don't know if that still is what you want to do.
April 16th.
It's the only.
I didn't agree to something else. Board, can you kick around that date of April 16th and let me know what it looks like for you?
April 16th?
It's good for me.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm good for April 16th.
That's a Monday?
Yes.
I can currently accommodate that.
Okay. Trustee Murray, how does that look?
That's fine.
Good. Trustee Howard? Okay. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Todd, do you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Can I have a motion for changing the board meeting date?
Let you make the motion. So moved that we change the board meeting in April to the 16th of April.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The only limitation, Chair, is I will not have a K-Tech report for you, because that's not until the 25th.
Okay. You can dazzle us with it the next meeting.
Absolutely.
All right, our information items, tab seven, Spring 2018 Enrollment Report. Grayden Stanley, welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Grayden, can we just have you hold on? We're just going to take a quick five-minute break while you get your stuff ready.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Board, we'll take a five-minute break. All right, board, we're back in session after a quick break, and we're going to start again with Grayden on the spring enrollment report. Thank you, Grayden.
Thank you very much. Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, Attorney Lyons, and colleagues here this evening, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this report tonight. You have a packet that was laid out in front of you tonight that has some of the information. Also, I have a PowerPoint that I'll direct your attention to in just a minute where we can look at some of those figures. I do want to offer my thanks to Kylene Lloyd. Many of you are familiar with Kylene, he's our student data analyst who puts together a lot of this information, and supported by Ann Lewis, who's here as well tonight. So, thanks to them for a lot of that information. A reminder to you, back in, back in the day, we used to report 10 days into each semester, and that changed about four years ago, where the state asked for reporting, so it would be more accurate numbers of enrollment in the middle of the semester. So, it's October 15th during the fall semester, March 15th during the spring semester. So, these numbers are reflective of that March 15th date. So, I would like to go ahead and direct your attention to the first slide that talks about the total for-credit enrollment. You'll note, and that's some of the good news, that our head count is up 4.25%, but our FTE is down 2.31%. You're probably also aware, given what our trend has been over the last several semesters, that head count increase is due primarily to a very large, substantial increases in the dual-credit enrollment. We also know those dual-credit students are not signing up for 12 or more credits, so while it might drive up head count, it does not drive up FTE at a similar rate that way. I also want to note to you relative to this slide as well, that our students take nine credits on average, so that credit-taking behavior is a bit down from what it was before, that our average full-time student, that's students taking 12 credits or more, that constitutes full-time. Their average of full-time students is 14 credits. And please feel free, board members, to stop me if you have any questions on these slides. The next one is, oh, excuse me, trustee Van Ducci.
You may or may not have any statistical data on this, but I'm kind of curious. And we may not, there may not be the longitudinal data because of the timeframe and the timeline, it may not be long enough. But when we get these kids in dual enrollment, there's a real plus to that, because if they started with us, and we get them as juniors or seniors in high school, it's highly likely that they're going to stick with us, or at least for a while, before they maybe venture off to a four-year university. In the same vein, because dual-credit students pay significantly less, we're getting them at a, we're getting them at a discount rate. And so, instead of getting them maybe for two full years at the full rate, we're getting them for a year or two at a discount rate, and then maybe a year or so or more, depending on how many credits they've accumulated, at the full rate. So, in the offset, having them in dual enrollment, are we getting more students coming to us that we may not get otherwise, because they've already invested themselves in us as a junior or senior in high school? So, is that helping us in the long run, or is it hurting us that we're not getting enough additional students coming because of the dual enrollment? There are people that would have come anyway, and in the end, we're kind of shorting ourselves in our revenue stream because we didn't get them for the full two years. I could see that as a catch-22, you know, depending on what the, I'm curious what the data might suggest, if we have such data.
Certainly. Chair Wood, trustee Van Ducci, that's certainly a topic of conversation around here a lot, given that the growth, not only here, but around the state in the dual-credit enrollment. We are within Strategic Enrollment Management and working with our divisions, trying to track that more closely now. We certainly know that dual-credit is an effort to get more of those high school students to go on, to participate in the higher education process. It is problematic, as you described, the number of them are taking those classes, that they might otherwise take on campus here at the high school or at a dual-credit rate. They might also then be transferring on to a school here, or a school like the University of Idaho or Lewis Clark State, rather than coming here and paying that full rate. There hasn't been a complete analysis, but it's certainly an area of study within our strategic enrollment management that we'll be taking a look at. An area of emphasis for us in a couple of different ways is cultivating that relationship that we establish when we're out providing dual-credit at the high schools, building a value for the kind of education that we provide in such a way that those students will want to continue on, but beyond dual-credit. They'll want to continue here and get their associate degree that way. We're also looking at the leveraging of our grant and aid and our scholarships in such a way that, since the relationship is already built, we can say to that student, "Once you've taken dual-credit and you've graduated, we want to further incentivize your enrollment here as a fully-matriculated student to get your associate degree at NIC." So, paying a lot of attention to it and looking at strategies to continue to build that relationship from dual and credit, from dual-credit to a full-time matriculant here past graduation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, let me take you to the next slide, which is about dividing that enrollment. We looked at the, at the head count and the FTE, and the next one was looking at academic programs as we separate that out. And again, this isn't different than the trend that you've seen before. In those transfer programs and academic credit, we saw a decline of 7.13% in head count, a decline of 8.7% in FTE in academic enrollment. That is consistent with the trend that we've had now for a number of semesters. It's not specific to any one program. It's generally across the board of all those academic programs. If you look at CTE, we saw a decline of about 3.92% in head count, a decline of 7.55% in FTE. Again, they're not particularly sharp declines in any one program. As we look at that, we certainly know that a lot of that has to do, as is the case with enrollment around our state, the good economy and the ability for students to be out and be employed. Some of our strategy that we talk about changing that, particularly in the career and technical area, is the delivery of courses by different modes or different times, so that students can maintain the jobs that they have, but be able to access programs in the evening, or on the weekends, or in different modes. Typically, particularly in the trade and industry, those have been delivered in a Monday-through-Thursday or Monday-through-Friday kind of format all day long, so you had to make a choice between a job and the education. And so, we're certainly looking at in the delivery of a number of those programs, providing that in other ways that they can do both, that they can be employed and still participate in our programs.
Trustee Howard.
The career technical.
The career technical, I should know this, I guess, but what disciplines do you include in that? Do you include nursing in that? And, I mean, how does this break down? The overall numbers mean something, but obviously, do we have disciplines where there's a more dramatic drop than other disciplines?
Certainly. And I would, I would defer to Vice President Burns on some of this, but let me take a stab at that first, if I may. Trade and industry programs, certainly those that are out primarily, the Parker Technical Education Center. Then when you talked about nursing, not the registered nursing, the ADM program, but LPN and a number of the other health sciences programs are considered CTE. And then finally, on the business, business and computer side, there are a number of CTE programs that are one or two-year certificate or associate of applied science degree programs there. The delivery is different, as you would know, in a number of those programs. My, my knowledge is, is in the business and the computer side of it, the enrollment declines haven't been as dramatic. In, in the, in the nursing and health sciences programs, not as dramatic a decrease, where the decreases have been primarily has been in the trade and industry.
And what parts of the trade? I mean, we've got a whole center out there devoted to trade and industry, so I guess I'm looking to, what are we doing out there? Is it, are we filling up our capacity or we? One of the, one of the reasons I ask this question is, is if we've got auto repair, we got welding or something like that, should we be going out and, you know, talking to employers and saying, how can we put together programs where you can get your employees into our, into our, our CTE facility because we've got, got space?
Chair Wood, Trustee Howard, I would tell you that there are, almost across all the programs, we, we have not filled the capacity out there. One, we have a great capacity, but two, we have seen the decline in enrollment. And yes, we do have those relationships with our industry partners, and it's, it's a very interesting conversation because they come to us saying, we need to hire people. We have empty job positions open and we need to fill them. And we respond to them saying, we're doing our best, but we need students in our seats to be able to fill them. Sometimes the students actually leave our programs early to, to job out. So it is a conundrum because of the low unemployment rate. Certainly the desire to get more students in the programs, and we are marketing towards that, welding, auto, diesel, all of those programs, we are marketing towards that, but simply cannot seem to find enough students to put into those seats. If we could get them in, certainly we'd get them out and get them into the workforce. So I would say this year, probably stronger than ever, we have seen that interest from our industry partners saying, how can we work on this together? The North Idaho Builder Contractor Association, I might have that acronym incorrect, for example, has invited us to the table to say, we want to help you because we need more building contractors out working for us, we need more carpenters, et cetera, working for us, and have really engaged us in how we can work together as partners to find those people to get into our program so that they can become employees for them.
Thank you.
Lita, wouldn't it, doesn't it really come down to you will have to find people that are employed in other areas that are already employed? There's only so many people to go around. So can you attract them away from the service industry? And then the service industry needs people? So it's, it's really a complicated thing to solve.
It is very complicated to solve. And a part of it is, I think, the bigger challenge, which we've talked about before many times, is about changing the culture of going on and what higher education means. Higher education means a short-term certificate, a one-year certificate, a two-year certificate. It does not necessarily mean a four-year degree. And sometimes I think that in our, in our area, when people talk about higher education, people back off and they would really rather go to work for an eight, 10, or 12-hour job because they don't picture themselves ready for higher education. So we really have to work hard as a community, as a, as a society, a North Idaho, North Idaho society, to really change that thinking, that mentality, that they can be so much more, they can get so much further in life by coming back to higher education, which may mean a short-term certificate going on to a longer-term certificate, which eventually may end up in a degree, but we need to get them in back into the track. So yes, it is a bigger issue with, very complex issue.
Yeah, thank you. Grayden?
Chair Wood and trustees, I would just add to that, too. We're certainly intentional about some of the work we're doing to make those things happen. You're familiar with the roadshows where we take CTE programs out to the schools. There's a program now called NIC Connect where we're working with most schools in Region One, that we have all of our services go out there, from placement testing to advising to registration to financial aid and scholarship, to make that happen on their campuses instead of having students have to come here to access services as well. If you based the interest in trade and industry programs on the number of campus tours that Doug and Cassie and others have to provide in that facility, you would say the future is bright because there are a number of them that come and tour that facility. Certainly a lot of interest, but I think Vice President Burns speaks to that change in culture and certainly economy. While we don't wish for the economy to worsen, we certainly know if there's an opportunity to have immediate employment or to go to school and potentially take out a loan, not be able to earn as much money, they're opting the other direction.
Chair Wood.
Trustee Van Ducci.
You were talking about your outreach. In April, I think you have, was it the hammers, the hard hats and hot dogs, whatever they call it? That's coming up too, right?
Certainly. Yes, it is. And there's a number of events that have been taking place almost every month. We had a huge group here on campus this morning in this room of prospective students as well. So our recruitment folks and our dual credit folks, a lot of people have been out certainly beating the bushes and telling the story about what's available.
Maybe just an observation. Some time ago, when, when K-Tech was first started, there was the expectation, I think, that there would be a feeder for our CTE facility. And we continued to ask for and got some kind of data with regard to what students are coming on, moving on into the skilled trades. I don't remember seeing that data recently, but my last impression was that while a lot of the high school students are going to K-Tech and they're interested in some of the trades, they, those, there's a high percentage of them that move on to regular academic programs, not into necessarily parallel skilled programs. Do we have any sense about what that transition is like now?
Chair Wood, Trustee Howard, we know that the relationship is getting better all the time. That connection and being intentional about that has served us well. We know that the sharing of facilities and programs has been great. We know that there's been great growth in dual credit in CTE areas. And so there's more training and more, more taking of classes and certification that's happening at the high school level. I don't know that we have realized the gains in our trade and industry program that maybe we initially anticipated, being right next door, but certainly something that we're very intentional on working, working with.
If I, if I may, just add a little to that, just from a little bit of insight, being on the board at K-Tech. It is increasing, sir, it's, it's an upward slope with the new auto collision program that Cal DeHaas has spearheaded, where they've helped co-op one of the instructors, where the K-Tech students are actually coming over and taking their instruction in our building from an instructor that's been hired partially from funding from K-Tech. I can't say too much, but I can tell you right now, there are at least two other programs that they're working on right now and an expansion of one also, where we're going to try to repeat that model and increase. So there's a couple, three things in the hopper, but Doug or Cassie may not appreciate me saying too much right now. So I think there are some things, there's initiatives that will increase that participation rate, great, more greatly. I don't know if that's good English, but anyway, it's, it's being worked and I think the numbers are consistently improving. And again, there's some new stuff on the horizon, I think, that will help that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Wood, trustees. I'll direct your attention now to the dual credit slide. That's an especially fun one for us to talk about. You've seen the rapid growth that we've had in those programs for a number of semesters now. Comparing spring to, spring to spring, you see a 43% increase in head count and a 34% increase in FTE. So continue to have a dramatic increase in that. Certainly can be attributed to a number of factors. The faculty support here on campus for the delivery of dual credit, not only out at the schools, but here on campus as well. The staffing that we have in the dual credit office and, and the great work that they're doing in the outreach out to high schools. The support for dual credit among the other services here on campus, and certainly the support from the state in the fast-forward funds and making that available, not only $65 a credit, but the over $4,000 that each student receives to be able to access dual credit and other advanced opportunities, has resulted in this kind of growth here at North Idaho College and around the state as well. A new slide that you hadn't seen this, in this format in the past, we've listed the top 10 dual credit high schools where we're delivering there. You can see Lake City High School is the largest now, that we have 293 students taking dual credit classes at Lake City, at Court Lane, 203, at Post Falls, 176. Lakeland, it wouldn't surprise you that it's 174, and then down the line. Some of that fluctuates a bit due to what classes are available, what faculty are available to be able to teach courses, so that can change a bit from year to year. But certainly, we've been quite intentional about some of our efforts here locally. You might recall back in the day that more of our dual, dual credit was in outlying areas, and we weren't as strong in Lake City and Court Lane as we are now. So we're quite thrilled about the kind of growth that we're seeing locally in that delivery of dual credit. I want to take you to the outreach centers is the, the next one. The numbers as we report them, you might recall in the past, is it, it's duplicated enrollment. So as you look at these trends, you'll see from 2017 to 2018, spring semesters, for example, Sandpoint, that's in the red, we've increased a little bit in terms of duplicated enrollment. Duplicated enrollment meaning if I'm a student in Sandpoint and I take three classes, it counts as the number three. I count one time for each class that I'm taking. That's the case in the other centers as well. So we've had some increase in Bonners Ferry, we've had some, some increase in Sandpoint and a bit of a decrease in Kellogg that way. The other numbers that we started reporting, because those outreach centers are, are our outposts in those various areas, they provide a lot of other additional services. And so students can go in there for testing, students can go in there for advising, students can go in there for tutoring for use of computers and technology, which a number of people in those areas may not have access to at their homes. And so we track the number of students who come in and utilize our services. And again, you'll see Bonners Ferry, 560, Sandpoint, 1,530, Kellogg, 765, who come in the door and are accessing services provided by that center.
Trustee Van Ducci.
I find your numbers very interesting. You, you know, 45 for Kellogg, but yet you touched 765, so that speaks volumes to the necessity of having the physical presence there. And I do know, at least from a statistical standpoint, the increase in Bonners Ferry is significant. Anything to attribute that to?
Do you know, again, most, most of the increases would go back to the availability of courses in that area. They would go back to teachers who are available to teach classes. And then certainly I would credit, I know Christine and Alyssa and the work that they're doing up in Bonners Ferry and Sandpoint, they've been very aggressive. We've been highly involved in that, in that community. While there hasn't been a lot of growth in either one of those communities, obviously our participation, our participation has increased. The number of, if you look, went back to dual credit and looked at that, the increase in dual credit in, in Bonners Ferry is dramatic, and those students often utilize our center as well for support services.
Something that struck, oh, pardon me, Chair, if I may. Something that caught my attention, it's not good or bad, it's just I thought it was curious. Bonners Ferry, Court Lane Charter Academy and Timberlake High School, all with 71. Interesting that those three high schools at the same level. And to be truthful, with the hometown advantage, I know Charter Academy doesn't have a huge enrollment, but in Timberlake's a little, but for Bonners Ferry, that's, that seems like an impressive number to me.
Sometimes, too, in the, in the more rural areas, if you get a teacher who's qualified to teach a particular class and the school couldn't deliver it otherwise, it makes that a particularly popular choice. Often that might be the case with a mathematics class, with an English class, with something where they're looking for advanced coursework and have a qualified instructor to deliver that in one of the small rural schools. Online enrollment is nothing exceptional from what we've reported in the past. For, for online enrollment, you can see it has not changed dramatically. That's duplicated, duplicated head count of students who take online classes that way. A little bit of that change can be attributed to, as you see the downward slant, just a decrease in enrollment to begin with. It follows that trend. It also follows a bit in that our delivery of dual credit changed a bit a couple of years ago, where you see a more dramatic decrease because some of the courses that we were delivering, that students were less successful in remedial math, might be a good example of that, we chose not to do because the delivery of the course in that format didn't provide the optimal opportunity for students to be successful. Students taking, the next slide was students taking at least one online course. So by percentage, that stayed real consistent, too, moving over the last five years from 45 to 44%, and then a few ups and downs. So that's been fairly consistent about student engagement in online courses. And that is, that's the information I provided to you tonight. You might recall last semester, we had a slide that talked about enrollment connected to income, to revenue that way. That material is available to you. We can, if you want to see more specific detail, like you asked about programs, we can give you access to that. I can either send it to you or you can access it online with our, with our Data Mart as well. I, I wanted to note some particular efforts that were directed on. There's a committee that the president put in place this last fall, the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee, has been revitalized and has a large number of people working quite intentionally. It's co-chaired by Sue Shibley and Teresa Boranpol, and they're doing a great job of bringing stakeholders from across the campus together to look quite intentionally at all areas of enrollment, from recruitment to retention to completion. Certainly Peg Blake, Dr. Peg Blake, who many of you have heard of, who's our interim Dean of Enrollment Services, has done some exceptional work, working with enrollment services, working with our instructional partners as well, to look at a number of best practices that we'll be implementing soon that will have dramatic impact on enrollment. One of those you've heard a bit about is mandatory advising, beginning in the fall. We'll be having all new students to the campus here be required, have mandatory advising. And so that would be new, not only as first-time degree-seeking, but new transfer students to the college who have not had exposure to our system that way, and students who are on academic probation or suspension. Eventually, we'd be rolling that out across campus to all of our students, new or continuing. We also, the NIC Connect program that I mentioned to you, where we're taking our services out to the high school. Oftentimes, some of you have heard the phenomenon of summer melt, that traditional age students in the high school have a lot of support all the way through graduation of their senior year, and then all of a sudden that disappears. And as much as we'd like to think that they're going to follow through with their applications, their registration, their orientation, they don't do that when the support system isn't in place. And that's why we've been purposeful about getting out there before graduation and making sure they check every box by taking our staff to them at their high school before they graduate. We want to make sure they're registered, they have financial aid scholarship, they've been through every part of our process. There's a lot of work being done, you'll hear more about a one-stop shop here for integrated enrollment services and real intentional network. And then certainly, you know, on the horizon for us is the North Idaho Collaborative Education Building that we're, we're breaking ground on this spring, and it'll be in place by fall of '19. That's going to provide a place for our citizens to come in and access anything from a certificate to a doctorate degree through all those institutions. So then, the institution, North Idaho College, all of our folks are really intentional about being focused on enrollment. You know, that's an area of impetus for us, and so we have a lot of folks directing a lot of energy that way. Be glad to answer any other questions you might have.
Chair Wood.
Trustee Van Ducci.
Couple thoughts and then a question. One is, we're sort of replacing intentional with mandatory. I like that, but it's still intentional. You guys have worked hard to have those touches. And I, I've stated before, I wish, especially my younger son would have had that in college, I think would have made a significant difference for him. He got, he was far away from home, an athlete out in the Midwest, and he just didn't have the support structure that we thought he would have. And he didn't have the touches and people didn't follow up with him enough. You mentioned about the one-stop. I believe the expert on that is supposed to be on campus next week. She's going to be here shortly to impart insight and all, knowledge and things?
Chair Wood, Trustee Van Ducci was here last week.
Last week, I apologize.
And so, if I may just add to that, be, the kind of work that we're doing to this point. We had a group of folks who work in enrollment services who made a trip last week, and they went over to the Valley. They had done a lot of research to find some of the best practices in places where one-stop-shop concept was in place. One of those happened to be at Olympic College where Dr. McLennan had been and a number of others, including Columbia Basin as well. And so they made stops there, took a lot of pictures, have brought back information that they're sharing with campus. And then we did have a consultant from Acro, who's really a specialist in one-stop shops, who spent almost three days here on campus, meeting with all stakeholders, from president's cabinet to all enrollment services. cabinet to all enrollment services, representatives from across campus, who's developing a set of recommendations that'll help inform that process moving forward.
And my one question, sir, if you would, it's not really necessarily a question, it's more of a quest. For those that may be viewing this, can you speak to what our projections were, our estimates regarding our enrollment, to where we are now with the numbers that you've presented, and how those correspond? You know, high-low, we're pretty close, but could you speak to that?
Certainly, and I'll ask Vice President Martin to jump in if I miss something here along the way. We have to be careful, first of all, when we talk about those projections, as they're connected to revenue, because you know, each category generates a different level of revenue, from out of state, to out of district, to in district, to dual credit, there's all those different categories. So, you might recall fall semester, when we looked at that, in most of those areas, we were slightly down with projections. Looking at spring semester, when I looked at those numbers today, we were about at goal for spring semester enrollment, and all those categories, we were about exactly at goal for spring semester. So, we did, we did well this spring. Budget projections will be based on what we're looking at for next fall semester as well.
Thank you.
And based on each category.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Howard.
So, I guess maybe you answered this question, I didn't hear it, but are you able to project the enrollment for next year yet, based on what we got?
Chair Wood, trustee Howard, we certainly have some projections out there that we're looking at. And again, we're separating that and spending time developing our budget based on dual credit. Dual credit now, is it too early to throw out the number that's being said? We're talking about being over 2,000. You saw what the numbers were this year, and projecting that we may be over 2,000. That's great news, but certainly has some implications in terms of the revenue that we project. Enrollment overall, we're projecting roughly 2.5, okay, about a 2.5 decrease, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grayden.
Thank you very much.
Always wait for this one.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Board, that takes us to Tab 11, emeritus designation, and Dr. McLennan, if you could go through that.
At the, thank you trustee Wood, at the January board meeting, we were thanking trustee Meyer for her service, the question came up about emeritus status. You tasked me to do some investigation, research on policies related to that, we have done that. What you have is a, and the request was specifically for trustee, emeritus status, as through, based on my experience of these policies and what's out there, we combined it with faculty, staff as well, thought the trustees would at least want to see that information.
Absolutely.
And you have the elements, the benefits can be modified any way the board wants to include or delete. In each of the section, where there's a timing consideration, service of three years or four years, needing to be bestowed within a three-year period of time, all of those timeframes can be altered by the board in any specific individual sense according to this. So, this is truly just for information purposes, we have not run this through any policy work at this point. You know, if the board were interested in pursuing this further, like to get your input and feedback on it, and then put it through the college's governance process, and get others involved in taking a look at it.
Great, okay. Board, this is just for discussion, it's something that we have expressed wanting to make happen. So, I guess what's the best way to get our feedback to you? Individual board members, in writing, or?
Well, you could, you could take, if you have time this evening, to give me some here tonight.
Sure.
We could capture that, and certainly through email individually, capture that as well. And then more, just a sense of direction in terms of how you want this to go from here.
Okay. Comments, board? Joe, go ahead. Sorry.
Rick, I appreciate the work you've done on this, and it's consistent with what many institutions do. And so, President, I would suggest that maybe the next step would be to having the administration run this through a policy process that includes faculty and staff, and then come back to the board with a draft policy recommendation. If the rest of the board feels that having emeritus status is worthy, and I certainly do, but I would suggest that that would be the next formal steps for us.
Okay. Was there anything in particular that you wanted to highlight, that you liked everything you saw?
Nothing in particular. I think it's, it's well-crafted, it covers the ground very well, and I think that it needs to be processed through faculty and staff, and receive their input as well.
Sure. Trustee Howard.
When, when we first discussed this, at least in my mind, the idea was that, with regard to trustees in particular, that we probably ought to do something to acknowledge their service after they've gone, and it was in terms of maybe parking permits for life, and athletic activity certificate, or something like that. And I still endorse the concept of saying thank you to trustees who have served a significant amount of time, or even a short amount of time, I suspect. This is much bigger than what I thought. And I look at it, and I think of all the potential mischief and unintended consequences that may develop, in terms of, what about people who served 20 years ago, that are still around? And board member, trustees, I mean, how do you go through and establish an emeritus qualification for somebody that you, you don't even remember they were on the board? But it would be a slight to them, not to offer that to them now. And I just, I think we've got to give a lot more thought to the, to the concept about who we're reaching out to, and how we're gonna, how we're gonna contain it, so that we don't, we don't minimize the efforts put on, that, and put, offered to the college historically, by people who aren't here anymore. It's maybe easy going forward to set a procedure, but I don't know that it's going to be easy to look backward and, and see who would qualify for the status. And quite honestly, the tendency would probably be just to give everybody emeritus status, or almost everybody. And, and so, I, then it would lose its significance, I think. So, I just think it needs to be given a lot more thought, quite frankly.
Well, I guess what I would respond to you is, your question really is, would we make it retroactive? And it's detailed out in here that you must be nominated within the year, is it the year or three years, of retirement, or leaving the board? And so, I don't, as much as we know, people have made great contributions, it seems like that would be very difficult to track down everyone, and we might just look at going forward, as the policy progresses, those people that would fall in that three-year, was it a three-year?
Three's.
Yeah, three-year window, because it's a brand-new policy. And it isn't that we don't honor people in the past, but it's, as you said, it's incredibly difficult to track everyone down, and try to make decisions about some, we have no knowledge of these people, and it is this board making the decisions. It's the current board making the decisions. So, trustee Murray, did you have a comment?
My only comment is, I don't disagree with what Ken's saying, but I think a vetting process, and that's putting it through the process of the policy committee, and then it comes back to us, and then we decide whether we do it or not.
Very good. Trustee Banducci.
Just a couple of comments, if I may. I kind of view this a little bit in the same vein that Ken did, this was really more for trustees, as an elected official, as a volunteer, as a non-paid, non-compensated member of the community that devotes their time. And, and those tenures have changed a little bit, there were times where they were six-year terms, now we're on four-year terms when we're elected. And the number used in here was four years, which would be the minimum of one term. So, I think we've convoluted this just a little bit by including the whole thing with retirees and the rest of that. I thought it's kind of a trustee-specific, and four years, I think, would be wholly inadequate for somebody that was an employee, tenured faculty, administrator, something like that. For us, it represents a one-elected term. So, I think you'd have to have a different time criteria, if you were to try to extend it to people beyond trustees, first off, and then I'll see any other time timelines in here, other than the four years. So, I think, I think there's a distinction of why we're honoring the volunteer that served on the board. And then the second part of that, and the criteria, I don't take exception with it, but it depends on how you define it. It says must have a record of outstanding and notable service to the community. Well, I would suggest to you that serving in a nonprofit manner as a volunteer is serving the community, but the point of this as an emeritus is you're recognizing for their service to the college. If I wanted to be on the Rotary Board, or the Coannis Board, or do this, or do that, do that, and then Post Falls, or Coeur d'Alene, or somebody else can give me an award and tell me I'm a great citizen, and I've done great stuff in Hayden Lake, or whatever. There are a lot of civil awards that can be designated or given to the city councils, and the mayor, and the various organizations. So, I think by virtue of serving on the board, for example, I think we are serving the community. So, I don't think that that's a necessary bullet there, I think it's based on our service to this college. That's, that's kind of the point, I think.
So, your comment on this all-encompassing policy, I actually asked for that. I thought, you know, why would we develop emeritus policy that didn't include our, our administration and our faculty and staff? And so, the verbiage there for faculty, for administrators, faculty and staff is a time of retirement. Retirement generally means you've went through your entire career, and then they would have to be recommended within three years. So, those things can be sorted out through the normal procedure, and be brought back to us, but if, if there's something you would like specific address, then I would say, put it in writing and send it to the president. Otherwise, what are your, go ahead trustee Howard.
Well, I guess my question is, if we're gonna, if we're gonna expand this policy out to retired administrators, or full-time faculty or staff, then I, it does have to get vetted, I think, through the normal process. But if it's just going to be a policy for trustees, then I don't think it needs to be vetted through staff, and this is a policy for the trustees, recognizing and honoring trustees. And I, I think that should be our policy, what we decide to do.
Well, I guess probably we need some, a board consensus on that. But what I would encourage the administration to do, if the board says they only want a policy for themselves, I would encourage the administration to get busy on a policy for everyone else. There's nothing wrong with having separated policies, but I would just want to make sure that they certainly are considered for emeritus status. Trustee Dunlap.
In, in most institutions, emeritus status is available for employees or former employees, not for regents or trustees in general. And I would suggest that if we are going to have an emeritus status policy, that it include, that it be all-encompassing. Now, there may be different criteria for trustees or volunteers than it does for employees, but to me, it doesn't make sense to have two separate policies. It could all be incorporated into one. And I'd fully support the notion of emeritus status for faculty, staff, and employees.
Me too. Any other feedback? Are we wanting to move forward with an all-encompassing, or do we want to separate it? I guess we have to give some feedback right now.
We should.
So, two want to forward it all-encompassing. Trustee Murray?
Yeah.
All-encompassing. So, where are you and Todd at?
No, no, that's fine.
That's fine?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right, so the consensus is, not a motion, not a vote, the consensus is, we would move this back to you, and have you have it go through the proper procedure.
With the caveat of differing criteria.
Yeah, well, they already has differing criteria.
Well, trusty.
More extensive.
Once it goes through the process, it's more than certain to come back with differences.
Yep.
And, and if I could just make a couple of general comments, as Shannon and I were putting this together, you know, I was reminded, and Dr. Dunlap, I'm sure you've had this experience as well, in the 30-plus years of my experience in higher education, I have only seen boards of trustees treat this honor in the highest possible manner, as an exceptional policy, and as something to be doled out very, very sparingly for only the most exceptional service. In the language that I included to accept a timeline, it just occurred to me that for a college that's 85 years old, that has missed this opportunity for so long, that there's got to be at least one person in the college's history that you're going to find worthy of emeritus status, that's going to fall outside of this, this timeframe, and that you'll want to be able to consider that by policy. So, that was the thinking that went into that.
Okay. All right. Well, we appreciate the work that you did to get the discussion started, so, thank you. Okay, and then that just takes us to the board chair report. Just real briefly, I had the opportunity to, I got invited to the Day of Dialogue that Grayden invited me, and it was held on campus, and I would love to perfectly describe the group, I'm going to have to rely on you to help me with that, because I want to give them their due. But I got invited to attend and accept an award for Judy Meyer, and I'd like you to expand on the award as well. You're going to do my report, Grayden. It was just a wonderful event, we were right here in this room, and it's more of a women's event, but there were a lot of men there, which I thought was really impressive. So, Grayden, do you mind expanding a little bit on Judy's award?
Thank you Chair Wood, I'd be glad to do that, and thank you so much for being able to join. The reason that, that we had asked Chair Wood to join as well, is because one of the nominations was for Woman of the Year, somebody who's, who's had so much impact, not only in this community, but across this state, in terms of supporting leadership in general. And you would all know that Judy Meyer would be an excellent recipient for that. We made that nomination, then found out she was going to be out of the country, had a chance to talk to family members, they were unable to attend, so it made great sense to us that a dear friend like Chair Wood would be able to be there to accept that award. This event is probably the third year, oh, maybe, maybe the fourth year of, of this event, and there's a group of folks who've been organizing this annually, that do just a fabulous job. I would throw out a lot of names, but I'm worried that I would miss some. Tracy Struble is certainly highly involved, now that I've thrown out a name. And some others. Kristi Doyle is certainly a part. Sherri Simkins was intimately involved in that. They've had some outstanding guest speakers. Our own Dr. Burns has been a part of that, certainly in the, in the past as well. This year, as you know, they had an outstanding speaker who many of you know, Sandy Patano, who is the keynote speaker. They always recognize an outstanding student, a young student, female leader. You've met that young lady who was honored, Amelia Dobrovsky, who's the student from Australia, who is here reporting about the, the books for those that are incarcerated, so she was honored as well. And there was a third recipient, oh, Don Don Williams, which, who many of you certainly recognize as well. Don Don, our softball coach, and for her leadership, she had the softball team here as well, supporting her, so it's been an outstanding program.
It was great, I was really impressed. Thank you for filling in the gaps. I also wanted to report out on the Human Rights Banquet, the task force is hosting April 20th, many of you have RSVP'd. This year, along with the Human Rights Awards that we give out every year, we will also be, as many of you may know, Tony Stewart is on the board for the Idaho Hall of Fame, which is really great, because every other year, they get to do inductees. And this year, their inductees, the three from North Idaho, which is really great. Our very own Jerry Jaeger with Hagadon Hospitality will be inducted into Idaho Hall of Fame. Ron Edinger with Coeur d'Alene City Council, going on his 50th, he's in his 50th year of public service to the city council, and as a mayor, he will be inducted into the Hall of Fame. And then, our very own Coeur d'Alene Tribe will be inducted And then our very own Coeur d'Alene Tribe will be inducted into the Idaho Hall of Fame for all their decades of service to our community. So it's going to be a great event, I'm glad the board members can attend, looking forward to it. And so I have a very short report, that was it. Do I have any remarks for the good of the order?
I have one.
Trustee Banducci.
Since he was on the hot seat for most of the night, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Ken had a birthday recently. Yes.
Well, do you want us to sing? Oh, I'm a good singer. All right.
Anyway, happy birthday.
Board, do I have a motion to adjourn? Or I just do it? All right, adjourn.